One, two, welcome everybody to the senior center. We have no air conditioning in town hall, so we thought this was a much better option for tonight, although the, the temperature's gone down a bit. And I'd like to call to order the board of selectmen meeting for Monday, June 24th. All rise with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has us, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Uh, so item number three on the agenda is the first selectmen's updates. I think, uh, we have a lot on our agenda, so I'll take this really quick. Just want to highlight the town hall. We are expecting the air conditioning to be in service in July. We're hoping by the end of this week, actually, that they'll get the system running. So for those visiting town hall, I know it's sometimes not the most pleasant, but we will get through it. Obviously also with the Fourth of July coming up next week, I encourage everybody to look on the town website with all the activities going on in town, pay attention to traffic patterns. Uh, the beach pass sale process is different, starting on, uh, July 3rd. So if you are looking for parking passes or bringing visitors, you really need to do everything in advance of July, uh, 4th. So please go online and get information so you know what's going on for that holiday weekend. Uh, so that's it for my update. Um, any board member comments? No? No? Okay, great. Um, and then I guess real quick, any citizens' comments? Please raise your hand if you want to make a comment. There's also an opportunity at the end of the meeting for citizens' comments. No citizens' comments, anybody online? Okay, and we'll try to speak loud rather than using the microphone. Please let us know if you can't hear, hear us well tonight. So, um, moving really quickly forward, item number six is our consent agenda. I'd like to make the motion to present our review of the consent agenda as presented.
Salute.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, great, all right, uh, motion passes. Uh, now we get to the fun part of our agenda. Um, uh, we have a special recognition that we would like to, uh, uh, do this evening. Um, and so with that, item number seven, to discuss and take action to approve a proclamation honoring Joe Osslander as the 2024 Donald Rankin Community Service Award recipient. Can I get a second on that? Second. Okay, um, and I think we'll read afterwards. Why don't we just vote and then we'll do a little presentation of the award? And I know several people have some things they'd like to say tonight. So with that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion passes unanimously. Um, and so we would like to welcome Austin. I think if you want to kick us off and then we'll read the proclamation and if you'd like to join us up here, um, that we can present to you with the Donald Rankin Award. So this is a, an award that you'll read in, in, uh, the proclamation that we award to outstanding citizens that have a long track record of community service. And so the board unanimously felt that, um, that this was an appropriate award to give, that we're really grateful for all the service to the community and excited to give it to Joel tonight. And Austin will say a few words and then we'll read the proclamation, then you can come up and get this stuff.
Thank you very much. Joe, welcome, Joe's family, thank you for coming out tonight. So I've known Joe, um, for the past 24 years, uh, if you can imagine that. Uh, my first week at Beach and Rec back in 2001, Joe called, uh, into my office to introduce himself and asked if I'd like to go on a walk at Rockland Preserve. So I'm a, you know, let's go back 25 years. I'm a 22-year-old, fresh out of college, new to Madison. Um, so I met Joe up at Renee's Way Trailhead to start what I thought was going to be a walk. And I was severely unprepared for this walk. I was wearing clothing similar to what I am right now. Um, and, uh, never thought I was in for a multi-mile hike in the woods, uh, in July. Yeah. So the first meeting was something I'll never forget. Uh, I learned so much about the town of Madison, particularly North Madison, and the history of what is known as Rockland. Charcoal making, the murders in Rockland, cemeteries, glacial erratics, peat moss, and so much more. This crash course in Madison opened my eyes to what I thought was just a beach town, but actually an awesome, uh, place with every kind of outdoor activity that you can imagine. Joe has taught me more about Madison than anyone, and I truly appreciate that. Joe's teaching background never left him, and anyone who had the pleasure and opportunity to speak with Joe understands his passion about his hometown and how he feels about the area called Rockland in Madison. Joe's passion for Rockland never ends. He's at the property multiple times per week, and his love for the preserve is something that inspires me to do what I do every day. Rockland Preserve would not be the gem it is today without Joe. He blazed all the trails, planted hundreds of trees, and he's led an uncountable number of educational hikes for students, which allows him to pass along his inspiration and knowledge of the preserve to everyone that crosses his path. We are lucky to have many volunteers in Madison that help us run this great town. But having a volunteer like you, Joe, uh, is something that's a once-in-a-lifetime experience. Your stewardship and caretaking of the rich history that Rockland has, and your passion for Rockland has never wavered. Rockland Preserve isn't just 650 acres to Joe, it's his home. Joe, I can't think of anyone more deserving of this award. I knew Dr. Rankin well, and his zest for life, history, and teaching is the spirit of what this award entails. Dr. Rankin would get me for an hour in my office and talk about ham and acid, farming, outer space, uh, any subject he thought that I should know about, and I learned so much from him as well. Joe exudes that same energy and enthusiasm that Dr. Rankin did. Um, after meeting with both of these fine men, you're left inspired to do your job better and you're a better person for it. Joe, thank you for everything you've done for Madison. Uh, you're most deserving of this honorable distinction. Thank you.
We have a proclamation. Whereas volunteer service is an integral part of the operational and spirit of the town of Madison, we honor those who generously give their time and talents to improve our community. And whereas Joseph Osslander and his family have been an integral part of Madison for generations, and whereas Joe began his career as an educator in Madison in 1970, hired as a social studies teacher at Daniel Hand High School. He served many roles during his 28-year tenure at Daniel Hand High School, teacher, department coordinator, assistant principal, principal, and whereas Joe has committed years of service to the town of Madison, serving as sexting for Rockland Cemetery and Indian Cemetery in the 70s, as a charter member of the Charlotte Edwards Archives in the 1980s, as a member of the Madison Youth Services Board in the 1990s, as a director and chairperson of the Madison Land Conservation Trust in the 2000s, and as chairperson of the Development Committee for the Town Acquisition of the Braymore Property, now Rockland Preserve, which Joe has been committee chairperson to the advisory committee since its inception in 2002. And whereas Joe's dedication to Rockland Preserve is witnessed by the countless visitors Rockland welcomes each year, tree plantings, constructing a historical charcoal pit, hikes for the Madison school students, blazing and maintaining the beautiful trail system of the 649 acre preserve, and most importantly, sharing his love of Madison's Rockland section with any and all who have had the pleasure of listening. Joe's commitment to this land preserves the history of North Madison and has transformed Rockland from a diamond in the rough to a gem that shines brightly for all who visit. And whereas Joe has demonstrated the necessary qualities to be the recipient of the 2024 Donald Rankin Community Service Award through the contribution of his time, energy, and talents to make Madison such an exceptional place to live. And now therefore, we, the board of selectmen of Madison, Connecticut, do hereby award Joseph Oss- Osslander the Donald Rankin Community Service Award in recognition of his hard work and tireless efforts to improve the lives of residents of the town of Madison, dated in Madison this 20th day of May, 2024.
We'll do the presentation, there's actually another item on here that I worked out, and, uh, so we're going to get to a, a final one of these because Scott needs to sign it as well, the proclamation, so we'll get that too. He's unfortunately cannot be here. I don't know, somebody wants to take a picture with us with the board? And here is the Donald Rankin Award. So, um, but once again, we're just very grateful for everything you've done for the community, so. Well deserved, and the town runs on people like you. You're the heart, soul of the community, and so we're so proud that we have so many people like you dedicated.
It all came along at the right time, uh, retiring at the school system. I had to have something in the middle, and what could be any closer than two miles from my house, the Rockland Preserve. So let's just say you can go right there. I mean, it's great talk.
We'll do a great photo, and, uh, I'm not going to hold this here. Perfect. Goodbye. Great, thank you, all right, thank you. So I do want to, there was another action item, uh, here that, uh, is really kind of tied together with the Rankin Award. But, um, item number eight is discuss and take action to approve a recommendation from the Rockland Preserve Committee to rename the Rockland Preserve Renee's Way Trailhead, the Osslander Family Trailhead.
Salute, second.
Any further discussion? Just, uh, we're excited to do this. I know this was something that was brought forward to us and we thought was excellent, uh, an idea, and we can't think of a better way to commemorate all the work at, at Rockland by naming the trailhead after you and your family. So with that, all in favor?
Just two, two quick, um, anecdotes. So, um, Joe's getting older now, and so his memory may not be as crisp, but, um, in 1978, when he was the assistant principal, I'm just wanting to clear here and now for the record, I was never, ever called down to his office, despite what he says. Um, the second is, I, I, I can't say how appropriate, um, this renaming is. This is my favorite parking lot for mountain biking in Rockland Preserve, and there isn't a Saturday that up there where he isn't already there in the morning or is on his way in when I'm leaving. Um, he is quietly relentless about taking care of this property. And when Austin said it wouldn't be what it is today, um, I think he understates the vision that Joe has had. Every time an idea has been brought forward to the commission under his leadership, he has worked hard to say yes. How can we get more people to enjoy this beautiful property? And that really, Joe, I think is, your legacy is as much as anything else, that you've created a space where so many different people can go and enjoy the property in their own way, whether it's looking, um, for flowers, looking for wildlife, uh, mountain biking, hiking, um, taking care of the pond, um, taking care of the, the invasive species and replacing them with local, um, non-invasive species of plants. It's just, it's just incredible and amazing. Uh, and I'm a little afraid, um, for, um, what we're going to do to fill your shoes, um, some 10 or 15 years from now. Um, so, thank you. I'd like to supplement Bruce's comments on behalf of the Madison Land Conservation Trust. Joe has been a, a member of the board for many, many decades. And, um, in addition to taking care of Rockland, Joe has also been, uh, chair of our stewardship committee, taking care of, uh, 1,800 acres and 35 miles of Madison Land Trust trails. So, um, Joe, I guess all of North Madison has been under your care.
So he's going to vote, right? All in favor, say aye? That's right. So, um, so now I guess we'll have to get a marker or something up there. The trailhead will be marked with the new name. And let me, uh, we'll get you the proclamation later this week with the final, and the signatures. And if you want to let, take that box. It's nice, that's great. Well, thank you so much, and I'm glad your family members could be here and, um, just appreciate all, all the work that you've done for the town. So thank you.
I could just make a couple of comments.
Sure.
Lived most of my life in Rockland, and when the opportunity came about in 1998, that Ruby Vine was going to sell his property of about, we thought at one point, 1,000 acres, which included into Guilford as well at that time. And there was a lot of help with a land trust in Madison, and Dave Houston was very instrumental in convincing us that we ought to buy this property because it was, it was a gem. It was something we really needed. And it happened. We got the property, and for two years, we worked on putting together a, um, a committee working on what should happen at Rockland. What should we have here? And as we started walking the property, we started seeing old roads. And those old roads were roads, but no houses were ever built on this property. When you get to the very top, you're at 500 to 550 feet high. And yet, you don't see a lot of stone walls, you don't see a lot of things happening up there because it's Rockland. And that was one of the reasons why they stayed down near Route 79, where it was open fields and they could do their farming and their agriculture and things of that sort. But up there where we were was for huckleberry picking and blueberry picking and making charcoal. And one of the big signs that's, as you enter the charcoal site that we built, refers to the Osslanders, the Peony Antis, and a fellow by the name of Deef John, who made charcoal in the Rockland area. So recognizing the family, I believe that they many times were up there making charcoal on this property for their father, who was a blacksmith. So this is what went on at that point in time. And now today, we have an opportunity to kind of share all of what we have up there and preserve it. The other thing that's happened that's unbelievable is we have a trail that goes through this property that starts down in Guilford and goes all the way to New Hampshire. And it is now the New England National Scenic Park Trail. There are only six trails in the whole country, six trails in the whole country that have been designated as park as well. So this is really a wonderful thing. They're a wonderful place for camping, both scouts and all, and we've had probably 20 or more Eagle Scout projects done at Rockland by our community. So as much as I may have been involved in some way or another, we've had a community that has really played a big role in making Rockland what it is today. And I believe Bruce is a little concerned about what's going to happen in the future. We got some wonderful committee people that are able to do a lot of good things. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much, that's the fun part of the meeting. Now, uh, the, uh, the business part. Now you have to listen to us. Yes. All right, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation from Solid Waste Disposal Commission on U.S. Food Recycling and Food Scrap Collection Program. So, um, this is a committee that we actually share with, uh, Guilford, and, um, and it, it really oversees the Guilford Transfer Station, the Guilford-Madison Transfer Station. Um, but they've been working hard on looking ways to improve the facility, so I want to welcome members of the committee, um, with the presentation, so. I will turn it over, I'm sorry, we didn't, that was a chair.
We have it, I'm Bob Jacob.
Bob Jacob, so.
Resident of Guilford, 61 Cherry Street, if I'm supposed to do that here like them in Guilford.
Yep.
Uh, so I've been a member, resident since 1996. I've been on the committee since it was reformed three years ago. And I believe we have someone who's going to, uh, take us through the, the presentation, the visual portion of the presentation. Do we have that, uh, set up?
Yeah, she's pulling it up.
Oh, there it is, excellent. Uh, so as that's coming up, a couple of things that this report isn't, and then it doesn't address. This, uh, our current proposals have absolutely nothing to do with the haulers. Someday down the road, um, we hope that we will get them far more involved in, in what we're proposing. Uh, but at this point, it has nothing to do with the hauler. So for those who have a curbside pickup, you know, like sidewalk pickup, that are paying for that, uh, this is not directly going to affect you. The, the two elements that we are bringing together, hopefully you're aware of at least one, if not both of them. The first is the, the food pickup, the food scrap pickup. Um, so if we could go ahead, we're, we're going to look at food scrap and the way that we charge people for using the transfer station. Uh, next slide. Waste management, as hopefully all of you are aware, is becoming an absolute huge issue, uh, in locally, in Connecticut, in New England. Our places, our landfills are closing, they are full, and nobody wants a new landfill in their backyard. Uh, and so we are more and more forced to take our, our trash, uh, and again, the part we're primarily looking at is household trash at this point. We're taking it out of state and often out of New England. Uh, it is getting increasingly expensive, and there's not much to do with it. So part of our goal in all of the, that we're proposing is to find ways to reduce the amount of household trash. The second thing that this is not addressing currently is the bulky waste. Um, so, uh, you're a contractor, you've just ripped out some walls and sheet rock and all that, or you've got couches that you're getting rid of. All the things that go into the bulky waste, uh, that is not affected by this either. Uh, we're not going to sell bags to put it so, it doesn't work real well. So that's going to remain, it's going to remain currently at the $9 per 100 pounds, and then a percentage of that 100 pounds, a percentage of the $9. So if you go with your 100 pounds, it's $9. If you go with 110 pounds, it's $9.90. That stays the same, at least for now. You know, we're not even talking about ways to change that. We may need to, uh, but not at this point. The other element, as, uh, those of you who are aware of your town budget, is that both towns contribute equally to support the transfer station. Uh, it's part of your annual budget, and, uh, it is, we have been operating at a deficit for years, which means not only is it a part of your annual budget, you also get a bill, just like Guilford gets a bill, again, it's equal, uh, to cover the deficit. When we raised the cost of the trash disposal from $7 to $9 per 100, that was the first step to, to begin to reduce the deficit and hopefully someday to reduce the budget line items. Um, we may even begin to get there. But as we're looking at, again, it's going back to the landfills. How do we get stuff out of the landfills? And how do we protect our environment while we're doing that? Um, we have the numbers here, I believe it's 58%. If you go ahead to the next slide, uh, yeah, go ahead and go through. Well, the, the upper right corner, you can see what's, our landfill capacity is shrinking. There's just not much room left for trash. Uh, we're generating too much, and we are trashing stuff that doesn't need to be trashed. Uh, approximately, well over 50% of the methane coming out of landfills is coming from food scrap. So we started a year ago with a program to begin to collect food scraps. Some people do it at home, a lot, there are many people in our two communities who compost. Excellent way to begin to reduce the amount going into landfills. Uh, we have more people, I, I see phone numbers on signs, I see things on Facebook. We scrap metal, give us a call, we'll come get you metal. Well, the landfill also scraps metal. We actually make money, or at least we reduce expenses by the amount of metal that we can keep out of the garbage pile, the dumps. Uh, we actually make money back to help cover expenses. But food is one of the major sources that we can immediately affect. And so again, we started a year ago with a program. We want to continue and we want to grow that program. And so we have developed a bid system there. Uh, we want to keep that going, and we are in the process of, of applying for grants. And have we applied or is it, has it been funded?
It's going to be a, um, bridge loan.
Bridge loan, okay, that's the way, the right terminology, to extend that program. So, um, the food scraps are picked up and they're actually turned into energy and heat. Um, there's a use for food scraps, and because of the kind of system you can put things in that you don't want to put in your home compost pile. You start putting meats, you start putting bones in your home compost, and you're inviting the neighborhood garments. Mostly rats, but you'll get them all. Um, so there's certain items that through this program, we can increase the amount and the quantity of stuff. So in my house, I compost, I compost a lot, but my bones still have to go to the trash and they go into the waste system. Well, now they go into the food scrap program. Um, so we can do more and more with that. Um, so part of what we're looking at is the approval to continue and expand that program. Um, if we can go ahead to, uh, the next slide. But if you look there, you can see the upper right corner, all those lines are, may not be easy to see, but what they're showing you is how far some of our waste is going. Uh, that rectangular outline up there, that's Pennsylvania, that's not even New England. And you see lines that are going to Western Pennsylvania, you see lines that are going much further south. Uh, we're transporting that, and we pay. The, one of the most rapidly increasing parts of our transfer station is the tipping fees. What we pay to haul that out and the fuel surcharges that we pay to cover the costs of driving to Western Pennsylvania, and we're driving much further south to dispose of our waste. So anything we can do to get people to not put into the compactor is going to benefit. It's going to lower costs, it's going to keep that stuff out of landfills, it's going to reduce the amount of methane gas that's being produced by those landfills, um, and it's going to lead to more and more reuse of the materials that we have. One of the difficulties that we run into, however, as we looked at how, what, how effectively and how successfully we've been doing this, is the fact that people don't want to accumulate 100 pounds of garbage before they take their trip to the transfer station. Now, it, there's an easy solution, go when you have 10, but you're going to pay $9. Go when you have 20, but you're still going to pay $9. What we're moving toward, and if you go ahead with the slides, uh, again, it's the things we've already talked about, the food scrap program. I'm not great at remembering to tell you guys to, to, to move through the slides, I apologize for that. But in order to reduce waste, if we can tie the pricing structure to the, directly to the amount of waste, our belief is with the proper education, and there's a lot of that that's going to be necessary, we can reduce what goes into the compactor, the household waste. So what we're proposing, you go ahead, is to move to a different type of unit-based pricing. How is unit-based pricing different from what, uh, we normally expect? Well, when we pay $9 per 100, that's unit-based. But when you pay a set monthly or a set quarterly fee to your hauler, that's simply a fee. It's not based on how much trash you have, how much recycling they're hauling. It's just, that's the fee they charge you. What we're looking at first off with unit-based pricing is ultimately, we're going to need to charge a small amount for the amount of foods, uh, that people are going to bring. Right now, we haven't been because we've had the, the program that, uh, we've been operating for this past year and the bridge loan that's coming. But what we're hearing from people is that, uh, the price is going down. the price is going down. The amount of food that's being recycled. I hear from my neighbors, I'm more careful about what I do with leftovers. You know, I don't buy a big roast and then end up a week later realizing it's been sitting too long. And now it goes into the trash or it goes into the recycling or the food scrap program. What we're looking at and what we're proposing is that we are going to provide, we're going to sell two sizes of bags. There are many bag sizes available, but what we're focusing on right now is fifteen gallon bags and thirty-two gallon bags. The unit price is going to move with this proposal from weight to volume. Basically, your kitchen garbage size bag. So instead of waiting till I have a hundred pounds accumulated, that's quite a bit of trash. It takes quite a bit of time to do that. You will buy a bag, either fifteen gallon size or thirty-two gallon size. It'll cost a dollar fifty or three dollars. That's the proposal. You know, nothing of this is written down yet. But you would, and these would be specific, identifiable by by color, by size. And you would simply drop them off at the station, at the transfer station. What does that do for you? Well, first off, it means that you can take your trash a whole lot more frequently without having to accumulate it to get the best price for your trash removal. Second thing is today, I drive there, the first thing I have to do is I drive in and go on the scale. I have to sit there, wait for the okay, they recorded my license plate and the weight of my vehicle. Then I have to drive around and come back up to where the compactor is. I have to get out, I throw all my trash, buy a hundred pounds of trash because I'm too cheap to not max out what I'm getting for my nine dollars. And then I have to go back on the scale. I have to wait again for them to look out, to to reweigh my vehicle. Then I have to drive around, get off the scale and go in and pay. I've stopped four times. I buy a bag in the future. I drive around, I come up to the compactor, I throw my bags in, and I go home. One stop. The traffic flow, the the benefit of the traffic flow now, because I'm stopping once, I'm not getting in the way. Less gas is being used while my vehicle's idling. If I don't turn it off at each one of these stops. Whole lot of of these. Now, where would the bags be available? What we're looking at is we will talk with local merchants who will have these bags available. And we will set up the logistics necessary so that the the town, the two towns together, the budgets for the transfer station receives the money from those local merchants. And at least initially, we will also have them available at the transfer station, because no matter how good a job we do with educating the public, somebody's going to show up there, not realize there's a change and not have the bags. We need to make this as easy as possible to do the right thing. So one of the places we need to have the bags will be at the transfer station. Ultimately, the next thing it does, going back to the budgets, is that by attrition, we have people that are leaving the system. They're, you know, retiring, they're moving, they're looking for a different job. We expect to, that that some of the financial gain will come by not needing to replace someone who leaves. Because right now, you've got to have the someone who's monitoring people throwing their trash. You're going to have someone who has to stand there and read the scales and and, you know, run the credit cards. And if you think about it from sort of a practical point of view, I need a bag for a dollar fifty. We have a transfer station that charges, that has a no cash policy, so I've got to go in and run my credit cards for a dollar fifty if I'm buying my bag there. And then out of that dollar fifty, I pay how much in the credit card fees? So ultimately, we want the the bags to be available at multiple merchants. So, you know, whether it's downtown Guilford, and I walk into Page Hardware, or it's downtown here in Madison, and I walk into one of the vendors that's making these available. They're very easy to purchase, very easy to take home. I can buy lots at a time or I can buy them each week as I need them. Ultimately, we get to the financial impact. Because as much as we're not doing this to save money, we want to save money. It is part of what our committee has been charged with, is what can we do to reduce the expense? Now, as you look at these two, if you can, if you can read the numbers, what you're looking at is currently our projection for twenty-three, twenty-four, which ends on the thirtieth, the fiscal year, we're going to look at a twenty-seven thousand dollar loss. That's after both towns have already paid what they're committed to for the year. And if you look up higher than the on the income level, each town is paying eighty-five thousand dollars a year to operate the transfer station. The right hand is proposing what we would expect to see for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. And when that attrition happens, when people begin to realize since I'm paying for volume, there's things that I don't want to throw in the trash that today I throw in the trash anyway because it's by weight and I'm not rich in my hundred pounds, so I might as well throw stuff in the trash. It could have been recycled. We're looking at potential savings of almost fifty thousand dollars, so a seventy-five thousand dollar swing. Now, I will be honest and say I'm comparing apples to apples and that's not reality. Prices go up. We already know that our our waste hauler prices are going up. The tipping fees are going up, the fuel charges are going up. So I am not standing here and promising you that we're going to save fifty thousand dollars instead of losing an extra twenty-five thousand. But the potential of those expenses, the expense line items going down, is significant. I've talked nonstop for too long. I've given you no opportunity for questions. There's a reason for that. That way I don't have to answer them. So I will stop for a moment. But again, part, we've mentioned the bridge loan. Part of what we're looking at is there's some expenses. The biggest expense that we foresee as a one-time or very short-term expense is the outreach, the education. People need to know what it is that we're changing to. And again, this is assuming that, you know, the the decision to make this change is approved. The second is that there, you know, we will begin to spend the money on the food scrap program. It's not high. It's much less than in fact what we're paying for the equal amount of weight if it stops going into the compactor, if it stops, you know, if we stop paying to haul that simply as garbage. We're going to actually be saving money because those fees are all directly related to the amount of trash that gets hauled out of that compactor. And then finally, initially, there's going to be some management and some monitoring of the program. So there's going to be some upfront expenses. And now actually, we'll stop and see if you have questions for me.
Well, thank you for that very thorough review. I want to remind the public here, we did a pilot program for food scrap collection home, at your home, and that was funded through a grant from the state. That ended in May, I think, April or May. We decided to continue having the food scrap collection at the Guilford Transport Station. So any resident can go and right now for free, go and drop off their food scraps there. So that will continue from what I can tell here.
Yes.
But you have to have a town bag or bring your own pail, right? So you can't.
You have to bring your own pail, but for the food scrap, there's no town bags. The bags that we're talking about are what would be used for the waste that goes into the compactor.
Okay.
So it'd still be bring a bucket, bring a bag.
So that really changed.
Right.
Using the food scrap program now at the transfer station, that would continue to be the same. So the big change would be how you bring your trash to the transfer station. You have to use the designated bags. You have to purchase those in advance. But you don't pay anything when you're there, right? As long as it's in those bags. You've already prepaid for your bag and you just pull in and pull out. So and that change, I'm a little confused though what this bridge loan is. So when you talk about, so I'm like, I know that this, there are, they, they the legislature, didn't they allocate funding to continue with the grant program? So I'm trying, I'm a little confused, like, why isn't it a bridge loan and?
So we're extending, we have an extension for eighteen months for this pilot, for the Madison pilot.
Okay.
That ended in April, but we have an eighteen-month extension for that. And so that would continue, you know.
Is the funding there now? Or is it, because when I say here, bridge loan, it sounds like you're paying back. So. You're saying you're not paying back.
Funding, yeah, you're not paying it back.
Okay. So it's it's really just an extension of the grant that we received last year that we can use for this next phase. I think that's what we talked about it. It's the second phase of the project, right?
It's sufficient funds to keep it successful, the food scrap program going, to be able to educate the public on the trash bag, you know, where to buy them and how to do, we'll have something at the transfer station for a period of a month. You know, when, you know, for transitional reasons to help people understand, you know, how all the things that happen today.
And and so, and just so our board understands, Guilford, I guess, I I can't remember in our agreement with Guilford, operationally manages the operation of the transfer station. So technically, they can just implement this as an operational change. But they want to come and get our support, because it's going to have an impact on any resident of Madison that uses it. Do you know how many residents currently use this for their trash?
I have those numbers and I forgot briefly.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty decent number.
It's pretty significant.
That a lot of people, they, you know, they'd rather drive to Guilford than pay for at-home service, you know? And especially when you look at it as, and we've talked about this when we've seen these presentations, you know, if you're a single person, you pay the same price for pickup at your house, whether you're one person or a household of ten. So a lot of people, it's a lot more cost-effective, obviously, just to take their own waste and and take it to the transfer station. So and I think in this way, it still would be more cost-effective. The bag prices are pretty and and you could say, you know, I don't know how it compares to the weight, but you know, I don't know if it compares to weight.
I'm not familiar with it. About how many, like, in terms of gallon bags, if somebody were to take one hundred pounds of trash to pay the nine dollars and they were dealing with the, I don't know, what was it, fourteen, fifteen gallon sized bags? So that's like a typical kitchen size trash bag. How many of those typically would equal one hundred pounds?
Around six.
Around six.
It's around, what's nice about this is you don't have to, like, like often, you don't have to save up your bags. So every week, you go down the hill, drop off your recycling, get your food out, get the food out of there.
Yeah.
And then drop off your one bag you have, even one bag every other week, or two bags or whatever it is, just save for that.
Yeah, that's a dollar fifty bag. It really does work out on that, but not a dollar. It's a price point, so. Okay.
It really depends a lot on the weight of your trash. I have numerous pets. So I have lots of pets. I clean up after so much trash can be quite heavy at times. But I probably do eat kitchen garbage bags every time I go. And I aim for that hundred pounds because I'm cheap, I'll tell you that.
What is your thinking regarding including haulers in this process somehow? What has your thinking been?
We we had one hauler that agreed to do a test with us and it fell flat. They didn't carry through with what they said they were going to do. So our goal at this point is to get this up and running, prove the the cost effectiveness, the the benefit to the landfill and in long run, it's it's less expensive for the individual family and for the towns, and then go after the haulers. But they're, they're not controlled by either Guilford or Madison. So what we are going to be looking at, once this is fully up and running, is a lot more pressure on the legislature. Because until the legislature begins to act and say, you guys can't operate the way you've been operating anymore, they're not going to change. Their businesses, they're in the business to make money, and that's what controls how they do it. It was a huge thing, even originally, and this goes back started decades ago, getting them to separate trash from recycling. And the number of times I called, you know, my hauler in the years passed, because I watched as they threw all my cardboard, all my glass, all my plastic, right in with the rest of the trash to to tell them that, you know, they were fired if they continued that and that they would be reported to the state. And they basically laughed.
What specifically would you like the state legislature to do? What is the policy that you think is proper and appropriate here?
I think probably the policies that we need are there, they're not enforced, and the fines aren't stimulated. So part of it is making it painful to do the wrong thing. Actually, one of my favorite phrases when I was doing some strategic planning with companies is you've got to make it easy to the right thing and painful to do the wrong thing. And in this case, the pain is hits them where their their thinking is their pocketbooks. So the so the biggest change with haulers is probably going to require legislation.
I could just mention that they did pass some legislation that they wanted to pass to make food-based mandatory by another year or two now. Didn't pass, tried it a couple of times. So they did change the organics law to include schools with the mother institutions twenty-six times in the last year. So schools would be, you have seven hundred students or more around there, it would be required, and then it's to hurt food scraps. So that that wanted to pass. We need, you know, we need an overhaul for every resident. You know, we need to get there very slow. Legislation is tough with legislators because it's very political, you know. And as Lita mentioned too, we had two haulers to begin with.
Oh, there were two, there was several.
One of them just didn't apply. And the other one did, and had a couple hundred households that, you know, we're we're participating during the pilot program, if anybody's here. So, okay, there you go. You were able to stay in and to include that. So, um, so there was a couple hundred that were able to, we were able to still service. And and very positive feedback. There's a, there's a slide we kind of went through quickly, but positive feedback. People were, you know, pawing, saying, I have so much of our recycling now with this program. And you have to laugh because the program is getting through that. But of course, we're educating on recycling at the same time. And everybody's looking in that orange bag saying, what's left? What can I do with this? What can I do with that? You know? And so the only thing left really is styrofoam, bathroom waste. You have plastic bags, but you know, there's there's local stores that will take your plastic bags, Big Y. We need to get better signage because it's called NextTrack, the company that provides those plastic bags recycling between the doors of the grocery stores. It takes, you know, the plastic wrap, it's my pellet bags and my stove, it takes, you know, all of the, all of the extra plastic vegetable bags, you know, there's a list of things. You wouldn't have any plastic bags, we'd love to be trapped, you know, so we very little left. I mean, very little left. And so, so that would be really exciting, being able to get everybody to that point. But that holder that would just participate is looking to to permit a site for sorting those bags. It's the infrastructure is difficult for this program. Lots of, there's lots of, but there's challenges with this program to get the infrastructure versus food scrap. To be at, and we should.
I think that the program, somebody that participated there had thought I can only have two trash bags a week.
Yeah.
And you know what? Family of four and kids that are very busy and have a lot. We were fine with two. I mean, we had more than two. Every occasionally, we used two, you know, three or four, depending if we had a party or whatever. But because of the, just getting the food out of there, it's amazing. So we ended up subscribing to your work. So we're using that now.
Yeah, and happy too. It's happy.
Yeah, it is. And if anything, that bin is not even big enough.
Yeah.
The food, you know, because we're really pretty avid. But anyway, so it's been a, you know, I think a great educational thing. I think it's something, it's a, it's, I think what I always tell people, this is a cost issue. There's nowhere for the stuff to go and you've got waste in there that should not be going, you should be paying for pounds for something that can be used for, you know, used for something else. So I think this I, my personal opinion, I think it's it's great that they're moving forward. Just having been to the transportation, it's pain. You've got to go in, you've got to play. It's like, so I think having a very simple process and it will streamline it. It may balance out. Some people may pay a little more. Some people might be saving money by using the bags. But I think if it helps the operations work better and also promotes people to think about, you know, taking things out of those bags and putting it in the recycling or food scrap recycling, that's a great thing.
I, so. Well, I was just going to ask if hours or access would change at all? Because I'm just thinking about working families who may not have access to the transfer station during the work week. And if they have families that are participating in sports and that sort of thing, they probably can't get there on Saturday either. Would there be an ability for people to drop off those prepaid bags with somewhere?
It's not anything we've discussed, but I would certainly be willing to bring it to the committee and bring it back to both boards of select.
Yeah, it's seven thirty right now, except for Wednesdays and Sundays, they're first. Seven before Wednesday.
Well, not if you work in a hospital.
Right.
So certainly, if that's making it less than easy to do the right thing, then we need to look at it.
Yeah, for sure.
You have a slide that shows a pretty dramatic drop in tonnage with the implementations of these. Um, you have a slide that shows a a pretty dramatic drop in tonnage with the implementations of these types of programs. Is that drop in tonnage because of the diversion of food waste out of the?
Food waste and recycling, because as was pointed out, as people begin to look at their food waste more and more, they see all the other things that didn't need to be in the trash.
It's a one way.
So it's the combination.
It's got the recycling on it, and that doesn't show a a noticeable uptick, but it does show a big drop in uh, in tonnage. So on the recycling front, what recycling streams can the transfer station handle? I know you got cardboard, you got electronics, you got that.
Uh, any of your plastics, any of your glass.
Plastic metal, um, and glass containers, your hardware, your magazine container, all the major crew size um, recycling items.
Is there any major recycling stream that you don't have?
The, there are certain types of items that currently most of the recyclers don't want. Um, they don't want a piece of plastic that's less than two inch by two inch. So your standard cake cup. Uh, I don't know many people that literally rip the top off their cake cups and recycle the grounds and and then try to recycle the plastic. Uh, Keurig actually has come out with an easier to remove top, see, but they don't work.
Typically, it's for toilet capable, it's not, it's just. You know, that that is just not, but it's like they fall through the, you know, the.
And again, you're not supposed to be recycling anything with food. So things are supposed to be rinsed out.
Yeah, that's that's always, but then I I have, well, we talked about this in other meetings, they said because of the upper turn degrees, it doesn't have to go in wash.
It's empty, it should be empty though. Sometimes you have to rinse it a lot to get it completely empty.
So.
A kidder stuff, but yeah. Yeah, just it must be empty.
And then I know like the pizza box, that was always a discussion too, but that gets, that gets, you know.
It gets the grease in the cardboard, which.
Yes, okay, yeah.
It's, but they're now moving to recycling the cardboard from pizza boxes.
Yeah, yeah, and pizza boxes are okay with the grease in it now. We had a big pizza party after that, and we said, yes, and my son had the pizza box, but so. Pizza boxes are recyclable to the whole thing, and so they're all like, I mean, the high school kids are like, okay.
This has been a very.
Yeah.
This has been a very educational presentation, I appreciate it. Maybe if we can end it on this note, what is it that you're looking for from us?
Well, so let me back up first. I made the same presentation two weeks ago to Guilford. Um, as you pointed out, ultimately, because of how the agreement was written, it would be Guilford's decision. But they agreed, I presented to them with no ask for a decision. I said, I want Madison to hear it, I want feedback from you to go directly to the board. Uh, of selectmen of Guilford, so that they're incorporating your reactions and they're capturing your questions. Um, and I will go back to them July first, or somebody from our committee will go back to them July first, at that point with the proposal asking them to take an action. Um, and at that point, we need to include everything with dates to start and, you know, where we're recommending, who's gonna carry the bags, all that. But the biggest thing um is your your reaction and that they hear that. So that they're not making a a decision without hearing from you guys. Both your positives, your negatives, and also the questions that you would like to have answered. Then we as a committee will do our best to get those answers to you. And then, assuming it goes forward, we're gonna be coming back and asking for a lot of help in the educational part.
And I and I would say that's gonna be the biggest.
Yeah.
Steve is curb, because you'll get frustrated residents that, you know, don't use it often and then will show up. Why, I got my special bags, I got a bunch of garbage with me, you know, so managing through that process and then educating the public about it.
Yeah, that's huge. If we, if we fail anywhere, that would be the worst place to fail. That could undermine the entire.
And I and I think we can give uh helpful feedback on like, where it would be good to have bags sold, and I think it would be. Uh, you know, those types of things, working as a working group, I know John works with you guys.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I know personally, I like the concept, I think it makes a lot of sense, it it makes it streamline the process and it simplifies it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if any of the board members have, you know, conceptually an issue with it.
Sure, somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if if at the very least, it sounds like it's gonna make it a faster process for folks that do utilize the transfer station. Just in the sense that you can drive in, ride ride right out instead of the waiting process. So that does sound like it simplifies things. Um, you know, it would just be, I think you, we have to make sure we get enough. Locations on in Madison on board with carrying the bags, because Madison residents, you're not gonna wanna have to drive to Guilford to buy the bag.
Right, and they. And then people are gonna be paying more attention to what's in their trash, to the trash, it'll be juicy, it'll be, it makes me sad and all that. One of the things you said, Eddie, we don't have the visual on this, there's ten, we did a waste audit in a real house, ten white bags, they had one. No, they recycle or anything, ten white bags, got switched over to two orange bags and one food scrap bag, and then the rest of it was recycling. And so like what you said about, you know, it'd be done, you know, and that was just one of the one house.
And even if so, your bag really all of your pain for bag. Be more efficient, so, yeah, so.
It's pretty, it's pretty.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Al, you good too?
Oh, yeah, it's a step in the right direction, yeah.
I think we'll share back positive feedback and we'll proceed.
And I would assume you'd be in touch with Matt and.
Yeah.
Talking about the the reaction tonight as well.
I will.
Appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you for coming, appreciate all of you.
And one last note, we need another Madison.
Yes, we do, we are short still on, uh, so I will broadcast out. We need another Madison resident who would be interested in volunteering on this committee, and what's nice is I think for years it was kind of just hunk drum, right? But now it's really a lot of change, you know, dealing with a lot of the waste issues. So if you're interested in this topic, it's now's the time to get in this committee, so.
I'd love that you join us.
Yeah, so reach out to my office and uh, if we can, we pull in somebody that's interested in in applying for membership, so.
And just so you know, this is Mark D'Antino, he apologized, he didn't choose to be here, Waste Zero. Basically, Waste Zero has been instrumental in the state, and they've been rounding up everybody in the state on these programs to get us to use our ways, like. Desperately trying to get everybody on board and we can pass it on there, and it's not easy, it's not an easy job, it's a hell of a hard thing.
We're, they're representatives for T.
Okay, oh, great, okay.
I apologize for being late.
Yeah, no, you're, you got here soon. So we we have packed agenda, so we did actually, I know we squeezed this into the comment.
We appreciate it.
Timeline, we have some other big weighty topics on tonight's agenda, so, uh, but, you know, we'll follow up, but thank you for.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, I, yeah, um.
You should join the committee.
And I was just wondering from the board if we wanted to move the ambulance stuff up real quick? Because I don't think we have too much to announce, and that way they don't have to sit through, and then we might go to Academy, although I know we have you guys, that that kicks into an ARPA. Yes, so, uh, I'll, you know. Okay, is it good though? I haven't, do we need to vote? I guess I'm moving it up. I guess I'll make a motion to uh, move up items number eleven. Uh, twelve. Thirteen, thirteen. Uh, maybe fourteen and fifteen, which is. All right. You know, or maybe we should make a motion to move item number. Down to item number, um, item number fifth, I mean, do we want these, you go first, or should we have them? I just wanted, do you want us to?
I I don't think it's gonna be a lot in special, I think we can knock through those super quick.
Okay.
I can give you the elevator pitch.
Okay, so why don't we move up, we will move item ten uh, to below the ARPA, to uh, above, so we'll make it item sixteen A. Okay, so, um. So we'll go before ARPA, and then we'll get through ambulance and EDC, and then you're welcome to stay for the academy discussion, but I think we don't wanna feel rushed in the academy either, so this will go fast, don't worry guys, I know.
I need the ambulance.
All right, all, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wonder if I moved to that right, but anyway, so, all right, so, um, uh, item number eleven is discuss and take action to equip a request with the Madison Ambulance Association to move. Three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from CIP, just for year twenty-six, twenty-seven to CIP, this is for year twenty-four, twenty-five, for the purchase of an ambulance pending Board of Finance approval.
Moved second.
Okay, um, and so I don't know if you wanna, do we, do we have, do the board understand what's going on, do we have a session, presentation?
I don't know, Russ is gonna talk himself out of sale if we let him talk, so. Won't say anything then.
So obviously, this is approved ambulance, and we're just moving funding forward earlier. Uh, this has been something we've done for a lot of equipment purchases, trying to lock in a purchase and lock in a price. Yeah, so.
And so, yeah, we we talked about this before, but the lead time is extended. We're expecting delivery in the originally planned year, and we're just teeing up the purchase now so that that delivery can happen in the originally planned year, right?
Right, and this is some a challenge we've been seeing with a lot of these vehicles. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, item number twelve, um, actually, I remember somebody seconded me a lot.
I.
Okay, discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation request from Madison Ambulance Association, an amount of two hundred thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance to the ambulance capital project fund for the purchase of an ambulance. Pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved, second.
Okay, and this is basically the additional funding that's gonna be required, these prices have gone up astronomically, right? We've seen inflation on a lot of these, and in order to lock this in, you need additional funding, any other?
Well, it it's, I think, it's just a little bit more nuanced, it's the fund to pay for the ambulance isn't at a hundred percent.
Right, because.
This will bring it up to a hundred percent because we're advancing it the year. Um, we would have done this in the next cycle anyways.
Put the money. Well, we also had an S, there was an S for it.
And this covers that too, yeah.
Yes, that, yes, okay. Um, yes, but you're right, because normally this would have been another budget cycle, the more money would have been going to the fund, so, correct. Any other uh, questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, item number thirteen, discuss and take action to award a contract between the town of Madison and New England Fire and Equipment Apparates for for custom classic one fifty-six ambulance on a Ford. F four fifty chassis in the amount of three hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars, as approved in the capital improvement program. Ambulance replacement reserve and to authorize the first select one to sign all necessary contracts and documents, the contract is uh, through the source of all purchasing.
So moved.
Second. Okay, this is just the actual contract to purchase the ambulance, uh, any further questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, and then item number fourteen. Discuss and take actions to improve a bid waiver request for the purchase of the twenty-twenty-four Chevy Tahoe and all related equipment in the amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars, as approved in the capital program. Ambulance pressure reserved to award a contract to the town of Madison Colonial Municipal Group. Uh, to offer this for select one to sign all necessary contracts and documents on or after July first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second. Okay, and this is the, basically found one, right? Basically, the vehicle, uh, item fourteen.
Well, this is actually on schedule, this is just, we're just.
No, but I'm saying that the um, the uh, we're doing the bid waiver.
Oh, because of the the.
I think you identified the vehicle and you just wanna move forward, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Same with that, same with it. And it's on the safe contract.
Yeah, okay. Uh, oh, who's that?
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, oh, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wouldn't put this all before the left occupation, which makes it sound a little more brazen. Discuss and take actions to improve the bid waiver request of the purchase of the twenty-twenty-four Chevy Tahoe and all related equipment in the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars, approved in the CIP program, Madison Hoes, Apparates and Truck Replacement Reserve. And to order contractors to town in Madison, the Colonial Municipal Group, and to offer as first select one to sign all necessary contracts and documents on or after July first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second, okay, so this is. I'm all in favor of this one, thank you.
This one is just in CIP.
Those are regular, yeah, but you're just trying to do them all at once with the, uh, with. Okay.
Just a little.
I just don't.
Little big ambulance, just be able to do it for eighty-five.
Yeah, I know, and.
I'm sure we go on there.
Yes, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, boy. All right, so those are approved, that's great, it's glad we can lock some of this stuff in. It'd be nice when, uh, you know, we don't have to do all this repurchasing and stuff. Um, item number sixteen, so like to welcome the update from the Economic Development Committee or Commission. On the downtown lighting project, so we have uh, Amy Wood, Chair, and Lindsay is gonna be talking about the downtown lighting pro- uh, project. If the board recalls, we pulled out of town budget. The funding for the downtown, the holiday lighting thing that we do every year, and the decision was to transition it to something more cost effective. But we agreed to fund through ARPA this one year, right? So you guys have spent quite a bit of time trying to figure this out, it's been a conundrum, right? So I know you've come forward, we just got this in, so if you wanna walk through what um, the proposal is that the EDC has come up with. And then we talked about, we're not voting on any funding today, so we're gonna have a whole ARPA discussion later, but uh, at least walk us kind of where you came, you landed on this.
That's fantastic, so I'll just kind of go through um, what I emailed to you earlier this afternoon. Um, and basically, the Economic Development Commission would like to propose the following plan and financing request for what has become. Quite a beloved display of lighting downtown. Um, it seems every year, um, all the townspeople have. Lots of feedback regarding wreaths and lights and just the overall festivities, and um. We know that it has been kind of a last minute scramble in years past to try to get something up and beautiful that's cost effective. Um, in my professional background, I have uh, commercial and retail experience, especially with, you know, decorating windows and all, all types of things. Um, and the earlier we do these things, the better. So, in order to do this in a more economical way and ecological way. Um, I have partnered with Dawn um, from the uh, Chamber of Commerce. And Donna from Madison Flower Shop for her expertise, she's been in business for, I don't know, that that was my first job at fifteen, so I I that I have a fond place in my heart, but. Um, the idea here is we are in the process of creating a nonprofit organization similar to the Madison fireworks. Um, organization that helps to support the fireworks display. The holiday lighting nonprofit will hopefully manage um, and fundraise. And finance the downtown holiday lights for the twenty-twenty-five season and beyond in conjunction with town and local business partners. So again, working with local merchants, local businesses, and what they would like to um, you know. Contribute as far as making the downtown area what they want, and when I say downtown, that means Wall Street and Main Street as well. Um, until we're able to kick off our official five oh one C three standing, we're requesting the following assistance for funding the twenty-twenty-four season as a kickoff. To help us get really underway in making this a well-owned, independent functioning machine. Um, we've partnered with local businesses and experts, and the estimated amount needed to provide a similar timeless holiday display similar to last year with wreaths and garland. Is four to six thousand dollars, two hundred and eight, or forty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Um, this includes the capital investment of eighty-eight high-quality, single-sided pre-lit faux evergreen wreaths that are thirty-six inches in uh, diameter. And that would mean two wreaths back to back on the pole so that you can see from either side on um, Wall Street and Boston Post Road. Um, this also includes twenty-seven feet of pre-lit garland for light pole. Estimated labor for install and removal and a small miscellaneous allowance that allows for any contingencies. Um, additional estimate options have also been included on the chart that I provided, and. Um, that is basically if we decided that we didn't want to fully invest in wreaths and garland this year, then we could do. Half, say, just wreaths this year, and then once the nonprofit is up and running, use those funds to help supplement for the following years. This also gives uh, the townspeople and the merchants and businesses a buy-in, you know? So the fact that if people are able to contribute to whatever they want to see downtown, they're able to. Much like when people contribute to the fireworks, they wanna see an amazing fireworks display, send us ten dollars, right? Um, storage for the wreaths has been secured thanks to the help of Austin Hall.
The Atticus Sirf.
We can do it.
Do it.
I am a Tetris master. Um, and Austin, I wanna thank you for graciously offering that, um, because that. Probably will end up saving about twenty-seven hundred dollars to three thousand dollars a year in storage fees from like a U-Haul or something like that. Um, I've also been advised, or we, the EDC, have been advised that these high-quality faux wreaths will last indefinitely, but I have included. Um, a line item for years going forward, just in case we need to replace.
Right.
So that's, I marked it at five percent inflation uh, per year with about ten percent replacement. Of, you know, all of the wreaths and garlands. Um. This is going to prevent us from having to seek out new greenery every. This is going to prevent us from having to seek out new greenery every single year and also. You know, kind of picking back, piggybacking off of the waste conversation that we just had. That's gonna save us from dumping eighty-eight wreaths and garland into the landfill. Um, and we will be all.
These are pre-lit, right?
These are pre-lit, yes, yes.
And would the garland have lights on?
Yes.
Oh, so we'll be able to wrap the, because it would be like when we have this year, but it would be all faux over.
It would be faux, but it'd be, it would be high quality and um. In my expertise, the faux is gonna end up holding up a little bit better than the real greenery because it's not gonna get brown, it's not gonna dry out, you're not gonna have. Pine needles, all sorts of things, so, and then that way, we already have quite literally an evergreen presentation year to year. Because we'll just have it staying, you know, in its little home above the surf club. And we can pull it out. Um, so that is the update on the holiday lighting.
Okay, and then um the. So this would basically, this amount, just so I understand, includes the purchase of them plus the labor to hang them up?
Yes.
So what would go forward next year with like putting them up once you own them? The next year, like, and to take them down?
Yeah.
Like, who does this? Like, who would be?
So this would be put out to bid, which we definitely need to do soon. Um, especially with the capital costs of purchasing the wreaths and the garland. Only because as we get further into the summer season, the supply starts to dwindle and then the prices start to increase. Um, I realize that these town products need to be put out to bid, but in my conversations with Madison Flower Shop. Um, Donna has graciously agreed to do, you know, everything at cost. Um, with no markup, so that's lovely. Um, but I've roughly estimated probably fifty dollars per hour for, you know, two people or. For maybe like a hundred and twenty hours total worth of work. Um. On the front and the back end.
Okay. Um, so you, thank you for, uh uh and this is a recommendation from the commission, I'm assuming, right? Um, I mean, I think, you know, thoughts from the board, but it is a great way to be more. Cost-effective going forward, but still, and have consistency, because I I think every year it's been like, you don't know what you're getting with these light on things. Um, and then I guess, ar- arguably, this, this nonprofit event, if they wanted to take it to another level and they could raise more money and do extra things. And this does not include the library light up and.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and that was usually donated, I know, by uh people.
Correct, yes.
Um, so it would just be the basics like we had this year, which I thought looked really nice.
I think it looked really good. I thought there was a lot of positive feedback with the consistency of the decoration, the consistency of the lighting.
Mm-hmm.
Tone. That was big feedback as well. I also appreciate. Yes, and so, just so everyone knows, we have looked into warm LED lights as opposed to the cool LED lights. Um. Seems like that was the more popular of the two Kelvin temperatures. Um, but.
Yeah.
This will provide us with a consistent presence going forward, which will also help with our downtown presence holiday-wise. Um, and last year, we had quite a bit from the merchants saying it was a tough year. And nothing helps boost the holiday spirit like some twinkle lights and some, yeah, some wreaths.
Uh, really, my only thought on this is, you know, as a startup. Um, adventure. That when we talk about the funding. Um, rather than the specific number. Um, I I think we should look at like a five or a ten percent bump in the first. Year, there's what, eighty-eight wreaths, whatever, so we're talking about an extra eight. Um, just for the vagaries of, you know. And one gets plugged in and it doesn't work and, and they don't have any spares.
Mm-hmm.
And at worst case, they all work and that becomes part of the replacement. Thing, so just, I I I would hate to see.
Right.
Eighty-five of the eighty wreaths work and have some darkness in weird places that.
Right. Well, and I think what we could do, we would be, and we're gonna talk a little later about how we're gonna improve our but that we could do an up to amount, and then you could go out to bid.
And that was to be my second thought, yeah, it just worked right out. I think it's, it's a non-see.
Cause we should have moved on.
It's a, it's a non-see number, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and then see where we land on it, um. In terms of the uh putting out a RFP for this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I think it sounds like a good plan. I mean, to approve the funding. We're gonna talk later about process, uh uh unfortunately with ARPA, it has to go through. Board of Finance too.
Mm-hmm.
So, their meeting is, uh, when's Board of Finance meeting again? Seventeenth. July seventeenth, so it's, it technically, if we had to wait for that, you could like push the button on the thing. July eighteenth, does that work? Like, if you get the RFP.
Yes, it's.
So our board is gonna be at our special meeting or, I think they're like. You do it. Easily to.
We, we, yeah, we could, yeah, we could knock out a list of things we know we wanna approve.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so um, so I would, in your thinking process, we'll figure out when we vote on it and what the final number's gonna be, and then. It would go to Board of Finance and assuming their support of, which they knew this was part of the budget process, I assume there's no surprise, this is always your mind, this is more. We spent twenty-six, I think, last year, right? But that was, none of that was reusable, right?
Right.
So now we're making an investment, like you said, so um. Uh, so if we, they approve it, you can hit the button and get moving, that's good enough time, you think, to get this locked in?
It's, it's tight.
Yeah.
I I don't wanna make any promises, but yes, I mean, I I think it's.
I mean, we could launch the RFP and then the funding is just, you could start and do the, after we vote on it. And then it would just be subject to approval of the Board of Finance, right? The actual award, can't we do the award? I'm taking, you need a couple of weeks for them to respond and everything else, so I'm saying if we did the RFP the second week of July, you get. Couple of weeks back, you get proposals.
Yeah.
By the time you get the proposals back, the Board of Finance will go vote on it, right?
That would be helpful, so.
And we just put the caveat in the RFP.
It's just. There's, it's just tough for people to respond, not being um sure that the money will be available. We, you know, we encountered that before, that we've had lack of responses to RFP because of when we have. That's one, and, and then chances are the Board of Finance may not be in obvious, so we would want it to be approved by the Board of Finance by the seventeenth of July.
Yeah, no, I mean, the, the Board of Finance would need to approve the up, not to exceed amount, I'm just saying if she can get the process. The bid out there, you know, and the bids could be due, you know, the week after that.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
But if you have to wait till they approve the funding and then launch the RFP, you're talking to August, right? So I'm trying to get it so that we could have the bids due, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know. Could be like, do, do back, you know, July twenty-first or whatever, and then at that point, we'll know. So, all right, well, we'll talk a little bit more about it, but it sounds like we're good with that and we can vote on it before she. Wonder, yeah, so, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Um, I I will ask since we're, it's not on the agenda, but um we're talking about ARPA later and you may not wanna stay around. Andrew, did you guys talk about the septic study downtown? At your meeting, you were gonna come back and the downtown study.
We did, yes.
Okay, and was there a uh support for that? You wanted us?
There was support for understanding the need. Um, the, the. It, the, the report we felt was nee- needed is, what have we got at the moment? And what are the restrictions on what we have at the moment?
Right.
And so that you could then work out. What needs to be changed or where the demand might come from.
Right.
Um, which is slightly different from what we understood to be the original.
Right.
Study.
Right.
And which was very, which was a very extensive and expensive study, and we didn't think we needed to do that, but we do need. To work out exactly what we've got and when it's going to expire and. And what the limitations are and so on and so forth.
Okay, so this was the study, remember, we were debating about, and I had asked the commission to, to weigh in, and I think they still wanna do this needs assessment. We can pull this together, I think, pretty quickly, the next couple of weeks, and then. You know, see what the, the, and maybe we don't need fifty thousand dollars, maybe it's a smaller kind of project, um. So it sounds like though they would like us to, you know. We have that money earmarked, it's already been approved, so we could just. Move forward with the RFP and make sure that we're, I couldn't find the one. The, I guess, I, I was, but old you something as of earlier meeting, and I couldn't find it.
I think we found a, quite an old one.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll have to look it out now, but I, I think we found one.
Okay, so why don't, we'll circle back.
Right.
Before our board actually starts going through this in more detail, but uh, but it looks like that we do wanna keep some of that money, so.
So, yeah, so the um. The, during the discussion at EDC, I think the consensus was they wanted to see the. RFP to see if it was aligned with their collective vision of what the study should be, and that was gonna be the starting point.
Yeah.
For that, so I, it was, I think, then there's a need or desire to see something done. They're just wanna match up their version of it to what the RFP was, and have the opportunity to, to have input on that.
Yeah, so I gotta find, I'll, we'll connect that more.
I think we could, I think someone found one, so um.
But that was, that was the one, though, that had been much more detailed than I, so we'll, we'll follow up.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I think we're good here, and then we'll follow up more.
Super.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Um, all right, Academy. So, um. So, uh. I know Mark, uh, Skalinka, and then we have the vice chair, Lincoln Spirely, uh, the committee here with us, and Phil Stapleford from the advisory committee. Um, and so this is an update on Valentine, unfortunately, the chair is um. Uh, out of the country, I think, uh, for the next couple of years, so um, but. I know.
Perfect time.
Yeah, perfect time, exactly. Um, so with that, I guess we'll turn it over right now, Mark's gonna give us an update, um.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, if you don't mind, hey, I'm just staying here, I can stare at the building and talk about the project.
Yeah, that's, that's right, yeah.
Uh, Tom Arcareer, the architect that I see is online. And then John Copeland, uh, he can help, he's a colleague, uh, I think he's online as well. So, uh, when we were here April, we gave you an update as to where the project stood, uh, based upon. The second round of estimating, uh, for the construction costs, and the committee had worked hard. With uh the architect and the team to come up with a list of priorities of how the. Fifteen point nine million dollars could be spent, uh, based upon the current estimates that we had. Uh, so we're not gonna rehash that, but we wanna talk about tonight is. Uh, if we were to stick with the original scope of the work. Based upon the referendum, what would we get and what would it cost? So we're gonna cover that. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about the schedule, there's two scheduling options, if we're gonna go to referendum for additional. Uh, resource funds, and then we'll talk a little bit about what's been happening, uh, what will be happening, uh, when we forward, so if you go to the next slide. So as I mentioned, uh, when we met back in uh April, it was to talk about what we could do for the fifteen point nine million dollars and what we're gonna talk about today. Um, it's that referendum scope and leading to the nineteen point seven million dollars uh that we estimated to be. Um, you know, a couple of months ago. Next slide. A lot of this is gonna be a repeat from what you saw because the core of the building hasn't changed from what the committees uh. Prioritize initially versus what was in the original referendum, uh, but there are some, certainly some key differences. So again, uh, from an overall perspective. Uh, sealing the building so that the water stays out and the air stays out. Uh, all new mechanical equipment, new lighting fixtures, new plumbing fixtures, new fire sprinkler system for the building. Uh, all of that was in the original scope, next slide. Uh, new roof, uh, uh eliminating the penthouse structure. Uh, new windows, new exterior doors, any masonry repairs to the exterior building, uh, cleaning it. You know, trying to bring back as much of the early character of the building, uh, that it saw in the early twentieth century. Next slide. Hazardous material abatement, uh, and all required interior demolition for the new uh uses, the new offices. New sanitary system, um. Upgrading, um, access to the building primer, so if you know the building at all, you have to walk up to get into the building. Uh, so the original scope was to get it into a more code-compliant manner from an access perspective. Um. What it entailed was a new entrance into the building, so the image to the left, uh, with the oval shape, would, would be the new entrance. Uh, from a plan perspective, and the top right image to the right, uh, is in elevation, so it'd be at grade, you would enter the building. The elevator's right there in front of you, or you can walk up the stairs if you're able to, to the main level. And then the lower level, which is uh depicted in the bottom right plan. Right now, to go to the lowest level, you can't get from one side of the building to the other, uh, because of when they were built. Uh, this plan, uh, while creating a corridor between the two, uh, the, the two buildings, so there's. Connectivity between all spaces on the lowest level. Excellent. Um, originally, it was proposed to house beach and rec, which is depicted in the top right plan. Uh, so you had, you know, a few offices, some open spaces, conference room. Uh, right off of the main entrance of the, of the building. Uh, and then Madison Youth and Family Services was also intended to be housed in the building. This is a slightly different uh plan based upon some reconfigurations. Um, and some adjustments to the, to the program. But uh, the middle image is the upper level, the third floor, where you see in yellow. Uh, that would be the Youth and Family Services suite, and then. Um, the bottom plan shows the lowest level, uh, where they will also occupy, uh, in the yellow, a portion of the lower. Area of the building, so again, this was originally envisioned in part of the uh, the scope. Um, update, oh, if you go back, I'm sorry, I just wanna cover two more things. Uh, updated kitchen on the lower level, and then all new finishes within the existing spaces, so whether it was a, a classroom that was gonna remain, just some open space. All new finishes on the walls, the floors, the ceilings, um, in addition to the new MVP systems. Okay, thanks. Um, just to talk a bit more about what was gonna be in the original gymnasium, so again, new finishes, new mechanical, electrical plumbing systems. New windows, new backboards, the backboards are gonna be part of the FFME, the furnitures, fixtures and equipment package, not part of construction. Um, and then stage improvements, now, there's been a lot of talk about the stage in the gymnasium. Originally was conceived to be just cleaning it up, new finishes, not. Intended for a, a high-level performance space. Um, elementary school performances, middle school performances, things of, of that nature. Uh, so that was the gymnas, gymnasium scope, next. Recital hall off the uh, the front of the building, again, cleaning it up. Uh, new ADA accessibility, uh, a couple of adjacent community rooms where you can open that up and have, you know, a decent amount of. Uh, visitors uh to watch, again, small-scale performances, maybe a board of selective meeting. Uh, not really envisioned to be uh, a, a high-level performing art space. But uh, certainly an area where you could have some level of a uh, you know, of a mid-level, minor level performance. Thanks. And then the art room, again, just to highlight, uh, it would remain in our room with new casework and finishes, ADA accessibility. You see that ADA accessibility all over this building because right now everything's on a different level. Uh, so the plan was to get everything up to a code-compliant space, so. Uh, people of all abilities can, can access all of the uh, the rooms and the spaces that are occupiable. And then I apologize, the site work image isn't the best, uh, but what was included in the original referendum scope was geothermal system. Uh, site upgrades, including a new parking lot and lighting, paved plaza, landscaping. Um, really making it um a vibrant site in addition to a vibrant building. Excellent. So as I mentioned, um, this scope, based upon the latest estimates that we received in January. Uh, resulted in a nineteen point seven million dollar total project budget, or roughly three point eight million dollars over what we had budgeted in the um, in the referendum. This is horrible to read, I apologize, but um, we're trying to show graphically, uh, where the project. Um, is and where we could go, so the light blue bar you see at the top represents the design phase, the phase we are currently in. That vertical red bar represents where we are today in the calendar. Uh, we're in the year twenty twenty four, which is the yellow section. The plan is to, uh, in this particular iteration. The plan is to, uh in this particular iteration, we would uh estimate in July. And we would uh present to the town. A new estimate of what the construction cost would be. Tying that back to a scope that the building committee has has guided us to boards. Would tell you what we estimated, think we're going to need uh for additional funds. So again, it's a it's an estimate, it's not a bid, it's saying this is what the estimators are telling us, we think it's gonna cost, and this is what we think we're going to need. So the referendum um would be in November. Um and by the time, we would also be bidding it at the same time, we just wouldn't know what the uh what the bids are. Uh we would get the bids after the uh the referendum. So what we would then do is is break ground in early twenty twenty five. Uh the next. And if we were to delay the referendum until February of twenty twenty five. Again, staying with the design, we're gonna do another estimate regardless of when we're gonna go to our referendum, so we generally know where we are relative to going to bid. But we would bid the project in the fall. And get bids back in the November, December timeframe. And then be able to package an actual number that we would need to meet the scope that the building committee is charging us with. So the difference between the November referendum or the February twenty twenty five is you would have an actual value. And we would have bids, and we would be able to sign a contract immediately following a successful referendum. Break ground um again in uh early spring, late winter of twenty twenty five. Both schedules, by the way, show an occupancy of July of twenty twenty six. Uh so there's no change in the uh in the occupancy date. So what's been happening, again, the building committee, again, continues to work hard uh in providing guidance to the overall project team. Uh the design team is continuing with the development of the construction documents, which is the last phase of the design before we would go to bid. Um there is a uh study being uh performed uh for the theater in the gymnasium to see what. Uh we could potentially do to augment the scope in those spaces. Um we're scheduling page turns with the Madison staff to make sure that the facilities and the IT and the various departments. Are aware of what's happening with the project. Uh we we had a page turn with the facilities department, they did come back with a series of comments that we're reviewing and addressing. Uh currently, there's an additional hazardous material study that's being performed that was requested by the facilities department. And we are reviewing and finalizing the commissioning consultant uh selection process, which is really just another. Um belts and suspenders or eyes and ears based upon the uh the mechanical electrical plumbing systems uh of the building. And that's it, uh this is just a reminder of the the team that's doing uh a tremendous amount of work, meeting on a very regular basis. Uh to provide guidance to our project team, um and I certainly thank them for for their for their support. That's our update.
Thank you, could you send us a copy?
Absolutely.
Um. Well, I guess my first question is, you know, the three three point eight million dollars, right, that's the number. So basically, deliver a building, there's been some modifications, because it's not gonna be geothermal. Right, but I'm just saying, generally, it's hitting all the marks. That were we presented when we went out to run around.
Correct.
So it'd be three point eight million dollars.
If you were doing everything that was in the original referendum scope.
Right.
It would be three point eight million dollars.
That does that include, because of the septic issue that came up, right, so this is gonna be. But that also captures the additional costs. That were incurred because of the change in the set.
Correct.
Right, because the original project had assumed the septic was gonna remain in place, and there was supposed to be modifications.
Correct.
This budget includes. Uh you know, a subject in a new location, and then site work that would have to be done to account for the new septic system, so that's kind of. Extra costs that were added on the project because you found out through the process we could.
Correct, including the turnaround.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure that number, there's changes in there from the original referendum, but it's more, you're still getting what was promised.
So it lives up to the spirit of the referendum, there are some value decisions in there.
Right.
It would be helpful to have those called out, right, because your presentation said geothermal. But.
That's been.
The nineteen didn't have geothermal in it.
No, the nineteen point seven had geothermal in it.
It does, okay, so that's, yeah, so so to Peggy's point.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Wherever there was a value decision to get to that nineteen.
Yeah.
While you're still sort of focused on the vision.
Yeah.
Of it, like, I think the 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 wings in the recital space, recital space. Um uh we decided that that's not, that that probably isn't the best idea, right? It so if that's not in the nineteen million, just we just wanna see it called.
Yeah, there is an iteration that that takes out geothermal that 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 that.
Yeah.
There was a priority that was established at the building, and you felt. You know, they felt comfortable with that, it was less than three point eight million dollars.
Right.
And so the reason, so that's, I think we need to see that as well, I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, and that and that was where, but I think Mark was trying to, you wanted to know.
Which is perfect, I really did, but I but I was.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. So now you work that way down from the three point eight, because there's been some modifications. That the committee's made.
Yeah, including. You know, spending more for the gymnasium.
Right.
Uh recital spaces, so originally, it was just like cleaning up, now there's uh the study, and there's some dollars been allocated for. Making it more than just, you know.
Right, but but there's a common sense discussion.
Yep.
Hey, when we, when we originally talked about it, we thought we'd open up these walls, and it'd be great, it'd make that space bigger. And now that we've really looked at it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that, so we don't wanna do that. We've moved from geothermal to another heat pump technology, so we're still. Really trying to be conscious about our energy profile and 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 what we do. But we think it's a better way to do it, at the time, geothermal was the old standard, maybe that that's changed, so. I think those are all good things to know, but but yeah, this is exactly what. Um we were hoping to do, if there are changes to the office staff layout, but you're kind of keeping the square footage, just call that out.
Yeah.
Right, so it's not exactly what we saw a couple of years ago, but. You know, from the uh the high level, it's not like they've gone from five percent of the building to fifty percent of the building. They've gone from, you know, ten percent to eleven percent, or ten percent to nine percent, or ten percent.
Yeah, I think we're we're about the same square footage for youth and family services.
So.
I think there was some iterations that had taken their location and moved it.
Right.
But now, after further discussion and really looking at the building and understanding the needs. We've kind of gone back to that original footprint that we talked about when we went to RFP.
Yeah.
And beach and rec, the conversation is, we're gonna have space for administrative things for the building. Whether or not all of beach and rec is gonna be sitting in that building from day one, is kind of more conversations long term for the department. So we decided not to build that into the project.
Yeah.
Um. Uh so that was kind of changed, um. But it gives you an idea, so we're kind of like, okay, we got, you know, the top end, this is three point eight, there's ways to. Reduce that, but there's some other things the committee feels are important that might end up getting us back to three point eight, right, if we kind of go through things. Or maybe not, so I think that's part of really. If we're gonna go to referendum media number, right, and so we need to kind of work through that. To come up with what that number is gonna be that we would ask permission uh for the public. You know, for additional. I like to use using the grant money for that versus paying off your cost, so.
Yeah.
That's.
At the end of the day, if we, it's capital, if, but if we were, it's really to say, hey, can can we use the grant money on top of. Some budget, not even the whole budget, just some of the budget.
Right, we have seven point six five million in the grant.
So.
And we're talking possibly three point eight of that to go towards the project.
Yeah, so I think what we need is an opportunity to. Process this new information.
Yeah.
And then we need to probably our, as a board, have a a discussion, maybe just especially if we're best, this is all to talk about.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then. A public forum.
Right.
Where we can explain our thinking.
Yeah. Uh which is why too, we need to see like what that middle option is, and I think this format that we're receiving these presentations where everything is. Segmented into its own little bucket, I think it's much better and more clear, especially for the public when they're watching either. Live or the recordings, to be able to really see each presentation individually to know and kind of digest. What it is that we're gonna be talking about um as we come to whatever decision. Well, and I think, and I, well, and I think that we as a board have to decide. Quickly, and that's why we had kind of talked about just. You know, we need to decide uh if we're going to move forward with that uh request on the November ballot, if that's the case, we gotta take on that.
Yeah.
We don't have to decide the number until probably the end of July, early August, right, what number's gonna be on the question. But we have to decide if we're gonna move forward with that process, because that puts into a series of meetings that we have to go through for approval. Yep. And then by the end of July, we need to know the number that we're asking the public to approve. Um so I think it is worth um. Us having that discussion, because we just, you know, I'd thrown out there a placeholder for Wednesday. Mm-hmm. And that's when we can have the more process discussion, I think, bond council. If we wanna go forward, what's the timeline, what are the steps, what are the meeting requirements, and then we have to say. Yes or no, because we really need to get it rolling like soon, and then I think we have follow discussions with. Building committee colleagues to nail down those numbers more, figure out what we would actually ask. Uh so. You know, I think that that is, you know, but it's gonna be, we'll see him ahead, if we can hit the November ballot, we've always talked about, the number has to be done by the end of August. For uh to get on that ballot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um and it sounds like, though, you're getting. More and more refined, we can get that number, right? And then really, the big question is, do we wanna go out and get information from the public on estimates? Or on salary. Or or on actual bids, so there is, you mentioned the same.
Timeline.
Timeline, which I think there's three or four months there, though, that are. You know, you save by going out, right, I mean, I know when um. I if I, I'm just thinking about from a from a standpoint, from like the bid documents and all this other stuff. If we have to wait to know if we have the money until February, you know, does that change? Yeah, I'm just trying to understand from the bid process.
We need to call it an iteration, if you remember, that showed going to bid after the referendum. But we took that out, we said, you know, let's continue to go to bid.
Yeah, okay.
In the fall. And, you know, yes, we won't have the bids by November, whatever the date is, early November.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
But we'll have it shortly thereafter, so we can um, you know, we can go and contract, you know, fairly soon with the the resources that are there.
And we can use February as a just looking at a practical timeline. Uh if it's not, if you you can't do in December, you could try to do it in January, possibly, we can fast forward and have it in January, you know, and we got the numbers back. So this is the conversation while we're in my council, knowing the timelines, what meetings are required. But that's what I think we gotta start making that kind of decision soon. Uh because it's the November one that has the the restricted time. Right. So, and once again, I just wanna highlight to the public, we're not asking for additional bonding. We're asking to apply the grant money to some of the budget shortfalls. Uh so that's what we will be doing.
If we do that.
If we do that, right.
If we do that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, we'll see him ahead, let's let's get these, let's have these meetings get it.
Okay, so I think, and and uh the I asked you guys if a Wednesday special meeting might work, it sounds like it will, so. We will plan so the public knows, six o'clock this week. Think we're gonna have it here, is that, yeah, okay, so um and then we will have the more process, we can get into it a little bit more. I don't think we need colleagues at that meeting, but I know Mark, I don't think you were available, yeah. But I think it's really a a more, you know, process discussion, so.
Yep, put some of a special board meetings, talk about that plan, that the building, I have to go back and do that presentation as well.
Um, oh, um, yeah, yeah, we can do that, I'm thinking.
Later.
Yeah, right, definitely, absolutely, yeah, and so we'll probably be on a fast track if we're wanting to move forward with, you know, an November thing, but um. We'll we'll talk about that on uh Wednesday night, yeah. So, and there was something else, I did wanna raise one thing related to Academy, because this was, I know. Um. Right now, the septic system. Was um designed, the the view was, if we're moving the septic system or putting a new septic system. Let's benefit all the other town buildings down, right, let's create more of a septic system that's gonna help out uh Mor Town Hall and some of the other buildings. So that's in their budget, right? Which is really not part of the project's story. Um so I had asked, and I don't know if you guys have gotten that, what is that, like, if if you weren't accommodating all the other buildings down there, and you were just doing a septic system for Academy. What's the dollar difference between the two systems?
John, you know that information, or Tom?
I, excuse me, I don't have that specific number. Um but I could get it, we have reached out to a specialist that does communal septic system designs. And we're waiting on their proposal to put together a feasibility study to identify. Exactly what the challenges are, what the technical scope would look like, what the approval process would look like. And what the cost difference would be to go to a communal system versus just the one for Academy. However, the cost to do septic system just to support Academy. Um versus um the other three buildings, um we can identify that, it's uh. Not that significant of a gap.
Okay, but that's more what I'm thinking, not the community system, because that. That's a whole nother thing, right, uh but it was, because I feel like, you know, what we talked about with ARPA funds. If it's another fifty thousand dollars or something that uh the septic is costing the project. To serve all these other buildings, you know, we could po- possibly. Uh oh, use ARPA funds to cover that gap, you know, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, whatever it is. For that, you know, the incremental cost to serve, because that was not part of the original scope of the project, it was never. Thought of that the Academy system was gonna be serving Mor Town Hall, right? So um so I I'm just putting that out there as a possible ARPA thing, you know, um but I just, we need to know kind of what that number is, um.
It it also um begs another question, which is the chapel, what's gonna happen to it? Is it a historic building, is it of any consequence in the town? If youth and family services is moving out, there's really no tenant for that. Building shouldn't keep it.
And and that is part of the charge of the facilities committee that started meeting to look at, you know.
But it but it dovetails into this.
It does, yeah, it does, yeah, yeah.
Because of the septic or anything that you're not gonna keep.
Yeah. Yeah, and and there was a lot of things that people talked about with Mor Town Hall, is that they thought that, you know, in the future. Bringing that back to auditorium, and bringing that into other uses, so uh I think it'd be just good to know. What is this costing the project, right?
So just asking the septic question a slightly different way. Putting in a system for the community center doesn't impact. The septic for the other buildings.
I don't believe so, but correct, Tom?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they're they're separate.
So they're all separate, and we're not digging on ground that they, yeah.
And I was told those systems are totally functioning, and we don't have any money from facilities, but I remember at, like, there's no problems with them. Okay. But they're eventually, you know, they're old systems, so the thought was, hey, let's be smart and make it up for themselves now, and tie those in. But it raises all these questions, like, what's the use? You know, what if you wanna put a restaurant in the youth and family visit services business, we don't know, you know, what that building's gonna be used for, so. Right, um. So I think that, you know, that's. Some things where we might be able to help the project a little bit too. In terms of the budget. Mm-hmm. So I guess then we'll plan on having our meeting Wednesday, um and then we'll follow up with some more details of what we need. Um with the from you, from the committee, from, you know, our advisors, um Tom. Uh they're working hard on the design plans, I know that, and, you know, there's been a lot of work done. Uh over the last couple of months, I think, some good decisions made, uh so just keep working away, and then we'll 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 figure this out.
Two questions, please, um one, will the, do you know if the terms of the state and the federal grant will actually allow the town. To apply those funds towards enhancement of the project versus um applying it against the uh against. The bonding? Originally, my understanding was you could only use the grant money to reduce the bond.
No, that was the bonding resolution, that was not a term of the grant.
Not a term.
It was only related to the bonding resolution, what was going on by the public, the approvals were there for that.
That's great.
The grant was totally. You know, the grant has to just go towards the project, right? So um. So, but we'll be talking more about that, you know.
And secondly, Bruce, I'm curious about your your comment about the wings in the, what I call the auditorium. Uh if if we in fact have. If if for referendum passes, if we have enhanced dollars. if if for referendum passes and we have enhanced dollars to spend on the project, then it was this clear opinion of the advisory committee that putting in those open wings on the side of the auditorium would be very helpful.
Okay, okay, so I I maybe I just misremembered, I thought there was a conversation where committee had taken up the discussion and found that it didn't really add a lot of value um to the space. But if they, but if 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 that's still a a really nice to have kind of thing, then that's fine, I'm not.
You can afford it, yeah.
I'm not presupposing.
I think we were discussing putting like double doors and instead of opening up walls.
Which are circle walls, right?
Yeah, and and there's a basement involved in that and there's other.
Yeah. So it's a trade off, I think, you know, cost versus benefit analysis. Because at the end of the day, even if those wings are open, my understanding is the sidelines are not. It's never like you're gonna be seeing the stage from sitting in those rooms, you know?
When we talk about auditorium, is that the recital stage? That's the small stage, oh nice, alright.
The the low entertainment value things like horse selecta meetings.
They are very hot. They are very hot.
Something that not everybody knows is the size of that stage in the auditorium, the recital wall, is almost identical to the size of the stage at Legacy Theater in Snowy Creek. And Legacy Theater has an amazing array, if you go on their website, an incredible array of programming and educational drama education classes they put on, and they bring in groups from the outside.
Well, and and that's part of the issue here is that every stage and theater space, you know, target certain kinds of performances that can be had, right? So, you know, you're not gonna have a Broadway show coming in and one performance there. You could have a performer or a comedian or, you know, a a a small, yeah, so.
Any theater.
Yeah, uh, so, but that's, I know you guys are spending a lot of time looking into that. So, and that report that you're doing will help kinda narrow down, I think, the priorities and what's gonna be the best use. So, um, okay, great, well, thank you, um, and then we will to be continued. Um, and we'll have our follow up meeting on Wednesday, so um. So, and then I think our next item is actually to talk about ARPA, right? So we're on sixteen. So I thought, I think it would be helpful for the, I think we just gotta decide our process for ARPA, because I'm getting people coming to me, you know, uh, what about this? People are brainstorming about uh projects. Uh, you know, I'm hearing from the board of finance that there's a preference for CIP projects, but then there's support for some outside projects, so it's kind of, you know, I'm, my thought is, why don't we set a deadline? You know, and just say, you know, July first, or maybe July fifteenth or something before next meeting. All requests have to be submitted, no matter what, and there has to be a dollar figure, there has to be all requests, and then we can just plow through that.
I I would even say whatever you've got now, um, you know, a list in spreadsheet form, this is, this this is the project. If we wanna reference that it's coming from CIP or it's outside, like that, whatever. But something that puts the the, just a simple list, this is the project, this is the expected expense, and then a separate one, which would be our funding, what do we have, what do we really have?
Um, so we we do have that, um, but I'm, the one thing I'm hesitant about is that I'm hearing from board of finance that they wanna look more at CIP, right? So I feel like give some of those members an opportunity to like dig through CIP a little bit too, so that we're not, you know, we're all kinda coming together with the same list, that's my thought, but yeah, so if uh, we have, yeah, yeah, why don't you pass this out, so this is what's there, there's a lot of TBDs. Um, because like, for example, I'm getting some estimates on a few things that I kinda gave a heads up we were adding to this, um, and I will have those in the next couple of days.
This is all the um support to community, so.
And then we still, you know, so this is the more. And then this is just, because I know that the one of the requests we got from outside group was quite substantial, so I just wanted to give some perspective of what we've done with outside groups, how much we've learned.
Okay, yeah, see, and this this is what, this is helpful, this community project, so because that was one of my thoughts was, okay, since a lot of this ARPA funding started prior to me, being a member of the board is like, you know, targeted. Right, right, I thought in like the history of the job, but like probably making sure that the test stuff go to seniors to you, to, you know, community and like.
Well, there's a full report, it breaks it up by CIP versus uh town projects versus. This is just the outside group list, but we can get that list that has everything, right? In buckets, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we have that, um, so we could send that up, and I thought this, I wanted to show though, because a lot of the conversations which you were able to participate in, when we did outside groups, we wanted to be a partner with them and we wanted them to have skin in the game, so where did we land on those? Um, and, you know, how does uh more recent requests compare to what we've done in the past? Uh, so that that's not to get into that particular request right now, but this is background.
Okay.
And then the things on these lists are ones we've kind of talked about. Uh, like I said, Vibe, you know, the booster group came forward, they had actually requested a year ago storage, and I said, well, the committee shut down, they're closing the door up, right? But now they're saying, wait, you're taking these, and they came back and they said the storage thing, it was gonna be too expensive and really not, it was gonna be a problem with the school as well, but they came up with the this need for the trailer, so that's why they submitted that. Um, so that's why I feel like if we could just give a, we're not gonna take any new requests.
Yeah.
You know, but then like by the end of this week, or if we wanna just determine that. Can I tell people if it's not open by Friday with a number?
I mean, I do think it's fair to give people that deadline so that they don't feel like we just closed the door and they didn't know about it. So give them the deadline and then, once the requests are in, that we can like fully look at everything. Because I think that's been the hard part is, you know, you have a meeting, here's a list, but we don't know the full number, but wait, oh, there's something else and we still don't know, so you don't wanna approve and then not know.
Something else comes in, and I'm like, oh, that would have been a great project, so.
Yeah.
Um, I think if we do that, that should be for outside groups, and then if we're gonna pick CIP projects, you know, that would be part of the conversation in July, because those are approved projects, but I think the thing with CIP is those tend to be bigger projects and they need, you know, we just, you know, they're out year three or four, you know, um, so. Yeah, I'm just trying to think through, what in Board of Finance's meeting, they're not gonna be talking about?
Not until July.
Okay, so I think, because I know some members I've spoken to, one, you know, I said, go ahead and look at CIP, and if there's something that you see in there, you think would should be on this list. So maybe I can reach out and just say, get it to us by, you know, the end of next week or whatever. And then we have a meeting in July where we just go through and vote, right? And we're still gonna have remnants, I will say by the end of this year, because you have to have a PO. So then we'll have our little list, our go to list.
Yeah.
If we end up finding another twenty thousand or another thirty thousand, we can have like a go, we can circle back, yeah, we can circle back.
So I, I mean, my my personal preference is that our focus is on the community facing things. Um, I understand the benefit of tacking on to CIP projects is it reduces a a future tax bill, right? Um, so, so that's great. Whether we spend a dollar on project A or a dollar on project B, it's still the same reduction of the tax bill. So, hunting through the list of CIP projects to me is not a a real productive thing. It's it's making sure that the community facing opportunities have well and truly been um serviced. And then what's left over, uh, we that we can apply to the CIP or or what. I I I would recommend specific projects, I would hate to see it go into an undesigned funded.
Well, we can't, right? Uh, for, what can we do? Like, we can't just appropriate money into CIP for the leftover money, right? We have to have a.
Just be a project to be able to trigger on.
We have to have a commitment by December thirty first, you know? And to your point, Bruce, I mean, we had this open for many, many months when we established just many. We tried to advertise, we talked about outreach over and over with that committee.
Absolutely.
We did not, to be fair, we did not get a lot of.
Absolutely agree, I absolutely agree.
We did, we tried, we internally created that June first deadline. We said, okay, where are we internally with all the projects that we already approved? So internally, we're trying to get there because we know this December thirty first is coming.
Right.
And we don't wanna leave any money on the table.
Absolutely, and and the the effort over the last three years to solicit in the community has been extraordinary, and I'm not trying to infer in any way that it hasn't been. Um, but as we come into the waning days of all of these allocation decisions, let's really make sure that that that, you know, through what however reason, you know, that 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 we just don't leave anything like that behind.
But the question becomes, do we do an outreach and then have a deadline, or we just say, you know, I mean, I'm just concerned, it might.
We've got a list in front of us.
Right.
Um, and I think we, we that know, I I don't know that we necessarily need to extend the deadline, we, but we've got a lot of TBDs here.
Yeah, well, most of, most of the community ones, I think there were conversations that had happened a lot of that. And for various reasons, they didn't get the process, so I feel like we don't have to go out to the whole public and say, get your application, right? Um, these are town ones down here, and I'm gonna try to fill in those TBDs. So, um.
What could I mean, I I I would argue that a, you know, a community board is a public facing type of thing. Right, it's not a charity, so to speak, but it's but it's it's public facing. Um, so so things in that spirit.
Yeah, yeah, and that's where uh we had, I know Sam did get some estimates and we were putting that together, so we will try to fill in these TBDs over the next week. Uh, and then I guess question is, do do you wanna do this in our, what's our next meeting, June? Jeanie, when's our next Board of Selecta meeting? Because we don't have a uh Tuesday morning one. And then we obviously now have a better sense, which is good, because ending up costing a lot of money. So another twenty thousand dollars, you know, we have that number in here, so we can take action at our next meeting on once we're a hundred percent comfortable with and we have our requests and.
All the information.
So if we have a, if we have a number that we're a hundred percent comfortable with that we've got to allocate, and we've got a shorter list of projects that we're a hundred percent comfortable, that we know we wanna approve, I'm I'm good with knocking those off.
Okay.
If.
When this July? I will start a reads, you'll have something of like forty five thousand dollars a year potentially.
Yeah.
In having to redo this every single year, so just tossing that out there.
So, we're not till the twenty fourth, but we know we're gonna be having some special meetings because of Academy and stuff like that. So we'll figure this out in the next couple of weeks, I don't think it will be till the twenty fourth of July.
On the second.
Or twenty second of July, yeah.
And if we could before the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
That would, you know, preferably, we could be all in the Board of Finance.
We could on Wednesday's meeting vote on some of the ones we've already talked about, what, why don't we technically, why don't we knock off Wednesday, the ones who are a hundred percent.
What is, what is, what is the pool of money we know we have right now?
So, at the top, we know we have two hundred eighty one thousand. I would not count on the middle, the next group, two hundred and sixty eight thousand, we're still waiting for updates on that.
Because those are projects in process, so we don't know.
We're waiting to see where we stand. That includes a fifty thousand for the wastewater treatment study.
So that number, we are gonna move forward, but we may not need, if we do a more limited scope, we may not need the full fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so we know we have two eighty one.
And then these are the list of projects, four of which we have official requests for with amounts.
Was eighty, were the were the automatic doors on the ADA, that part of CIP?
That was not in CIP.
Was it gonna go into CIP?
Yes.
So the history on that, though, just so you understand, they are ADA compliant, but it's taking it to the next level, so you have automatic doors for people with walkers. Austin was gonna be using the grant from the state originally to do it, that was his original plan, so that's why he didn't put in CIP. But then we ended up having the kitchen issue here in the floor, so we decided that was more urgent, and so he used the state money for that. So now, I said, well, let's try again, it's then a state one, right, for this redo in this room.
Okay.
Um, so, this isn't a, it's it can be, I mean, it's a huge deal, like, I'm kind of amazed that's, you know.
The doors are, they're very heavy, and if you're walking in there, even if you don't have a walker or wheelchair or cane, it's it's tough to get in, but they're a hundred percent compliant. It's just this will make it, you know, the ease of access for people to be increased.
Uh, Peggy, you've asked us several times if we're willing to close the door and when, and I think we should resolve that.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I mean.
I'm happy to work off the current list.
I'm happy to.
And just get some numbers against it, um, and then if we find that we still have extra, we can make a decision at that point. So, I'm comfortable closing the door.
Same, and this is, this is pretty much got all the ones we've talked about, right?
Other than that, holiday lighting is not included in this.
That that's understood though, because that was part of the.
That was on our agenda today, yeah.
And it was part of the budget, so.
And actually, it's a, it's a TBD on there to chat down holidays. I would say the amounts.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Okay, I I'm suggesting that this is the list now, that no further additions.
Yeah, then then we'll fill in the TBDs, yeah. And then, um, we can, on Wednesday, the ones that we we can, would you rather wait till all the TBDs are filled in? So we will probably go down this until July, maybe not even deal with it Wednesday night, because there's a lot of moving parts, right? Uh, we, you know, right now, we're two eighty one. You know, for example, you know, if you didn't see that, it would take half, you know, almost a third of the money. It's so possible. So, do you want me to, do you wanna go down anything Wednesday, or do you wanna just wait and do this separately in July or more in Tuesday?
I mean, I, I'm I'm comfortable tonight with the doors and the ABC. I'd like to know a little bit more, and I've read that we did get some information in our packet about the pre-K consortium and the Vibe um trailer. So, I.
And then the holiday lighting.
If there's consensus there, then then I would move, we open the agenda, if the, if there isn't, then we should wait. Or or not, the agenda just put it on for Wednesday.
Yeah, I'll put it instead. You have to turn it off for Wednesday.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay, good, all right, good, so we'll add those to our special meeting agenda to vote on, and we'll have all the numbers still, we'll look at the holiday lighting done, so that's approved by us.
That would, actually, that would be another one I'd be comfortable with, if we come up with a good number, then I'd be, I'd be comfortable with that on.
So, just so, if we were to add some padding onto it, what would be the amount, like, I don't know how much into these things. So why don't you just think about it and email me tomorrow, and then, because this is gonna be for Wednesday, so.
That's fine.
Okay.
Because I can also um check in with a couple vendors too and just kind of see, because these are all current numbers from, like, vendors that they have. But just as we're getting later in the season, I don't know if there's gonna be any expedited, like, shipping load of stuff going on, so I'll check in about that.
Yeah, if we were to go to eighty to an even hundred, something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, awesome, thank you guys.
All right, good. All right, well, good, we'll do that, we got a plan to move forward, um, and we don't have to spend a lot of time on the. Okay, uh, number eighteen, um, I I this can be just a quick discussion. Um, and we've talked about this a little bit, our board, but using the bond balance to do another infusion into CIP similar to what we did two, a year ago, was it? A year ago, we did the three and a half million, we did three and a half million to shore up those balances, so it would help mitigate future budgets, right? So we would be able to put less into CIP, this is all part of the Madison investment. We've now been, gone through a budget cycle, um, went through our revow, you know, and I think we were talking about, we have to look and see how the numbers shake out today with the Madison investment plan. Is there another amount of money that we can put into uh CIP again to help those future budgets, right? Um, and so the Board of Finance started this conversation last month, they're actually gonna have a workshop uh Thursday morning or Wednesday morning, um, at eight AM, just to dig deeper into the Madison investment. Um, and then come up with maybe a number, you know, they're talking like a million or two, we wouldn't do three and a half like we did before, but maybe taking a million or two million dollars and doing incorporation, so. And do an appropriation, so wanting to get your thoughts, because it'll come to us. Um, and I'm supportive of it, I think it's a smart way to use your fund balance, um, and Stacy, maybe just talk about the two different options, you know, with.
Yeah, so the Madison investment plan, we started a couple of years ago, we had some assumptions. Um, if people knew we were a little aggressive in our assumptions, now we have a couple of years of budget of actual percentage increases. Um, in order to revise, you know, what we were wanting to do, what we were trying to do is build up CIP, knowing that. All the debt service for these projects were coming on board. And so we did, as part of the plan, we infused three point five million, as well as approximately about another three million to, to, we built up a budget base. And starting from fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-five, we built up a base going into CIP, knowing that the debt service is starting to increase. So, overall, we reduced the amount that you put into CIP in the budget. We increased the CIP, knowing that debt service is starting to increase now, so now you will start to see the decrease in the CIP budget. Amount, so we worked internally, looking at the investment plan and seeing what we need to not only absorb the debt service that is coming on in the next. Ten to fifteen years, but also funding CIP for existing and future capital projects that are still out there. Um, so I think there's two ways that we can maximize our use of fund balance and put it into CIP, one. Is to help mitigate the debt service, um, impact on our tax, on our taxes for the next years. So looking at the plan, um. Our goals were to mitigate the tax impact of the debt service coming on, and still fund CIP the way we need to for existing and future projects. As well as increasing the capital project reserve balances. We know that these projects are not going away, so aging facilities, we're still going to need to fund CIP pay-as-you-go. Um, as well as, um, bring on the debt service, so those were our two goals. Looking at that, we want to talk to the Board of Finance, again, we came up internally with assumptions, we want to go over that with the Board of Finance. See where they see the assumptions, what will the budget increase within the next five years, or what will the budget look like, I don't want to say increase. Um, in order to still fund CIP projects and absorb the debt service, so I do think.
We can't really keep the mill ready at the, who are broke, right?
The tax, yes, the tax impact.
Which is what we've always talked about ultimately, right?
Right, we have.
Keeping that tax range.
We have, although, we should also add on to that conversation how we plan to taper that off. So, so if we were to. Not do any of this plan, we would see a fairly dramatic rise in our, um. Annual budget.
Capital budget.
It, well, the, the operating budget, service to debt. Right, if we were, if we.
Which I'm considering capital, yeah.
If we, if we kept.
Total budget.
It, it is, yes, it is capital, but, but it's, it, it, capital, but it's, it's debt service. Um, it would be a fairly dramatic rise, and then a gentle sloping off. Over, and, and from a year-over-year tax impact, it would be quite painful. So, this was a way where we're, we're bringing on. The increases at a lower rate, but earlier than they would have. And then, and then they are relatively level, so for a household that is planning year-over-year. That the impact is, is much less dramatic year-over-year. What we haven't talked about is how we plan to taper that back down, right, we, we, we push the spending up. Um, for a good reason, but we need to taper it back off on the back end in those, in those trailing years. Otherwise, we're just doing what the Board of Ed did with the high school, which was grew their operating budget into their decreasing debt service space, and that we don't want to do.
No, thi- this is really just a trade-off between. The, uh, debt service and the capital, you're replacing this, you're paying for capital, it's a total capital budget, right, and it's shifting the balance.
But we're spending more, we're spending more in capital now than the budget really requires us to do. To allow us to spend less in the hours.
Right, or the debt service, totally.
Exactly, so we built up with the three point five million, we also built up the capital project, um, budget annually, knowing that debt service now is going to be rising. So that we can then decrease the CIP capital budget as the debt goes up to try to, you know, smooth that out, but I agree, eventually. The debt will start coming down, and then we can revisit where the CIP or capital project funding would be, do we want to continue to increase that, or does it level off? Or what are our options at that point, knowing that there's some other big projects that could be out there with that?
And I think with Stacy's been. Trying to figure out what's a good number to infuse, right, just front-load. The CIP that makes sense, you know, because we do fire projections, like, what number helps us? Uh, and that's what she's been working on.
Yeah, and, and I think, with regards to that, my preference is. To not move it from the undesignated fund to an undesignated reserve, but to actually apply it to a project. Has the same effect. If you apply it to a project, um, but if we're gonna move money out of the excess fund balance, let's move it to a project. And then we don't need to collect taxes. To fund that project in the future.
So I think there's two things that happen. Yes, we can move it towards a project, so that was my personal go-no, goal number two, let's build up our CNRE fund, let's, you know. Get this balance higher so we could continue to fund existing projects or ongoing projects. So sure, do we want to dedicate that and put it, a project in there at the full cost and cover that, absolutely, but I also think we want to infuse money in there to help. Offset future funding.
Right.
Into the capital, into this capital donor program, so I think there's two-part. I agree with you, we could certainly do that rather than just building up a, the fund balance, we could. Identify a project and include that in there, now it's out of there, and we don't have to worry about building up that balance, but I also think a piece of it. Should help mitigate the capital. The capital budget. Um, impact that is voted on annually, to help smooth out that mill rate impact.
Yeah, you don't see those specific projects with the budget, you just, it goes into CNRE.
It goes into.
So that's the thing, and.
Well, we have year-over-year funding for the roads.
Yeah.
And the year-over-year funding goes up. And so we could infuse those, those deltas, that, those increases, we can take a three-year chunk and say, that's two hundred thousand dollars. Let's take two hundred thousand out of a million and apply it to that increase.
Well, I would like to do roads, also. I brought this up in the Board of Finance, and there was a whole, we need to do CIP for, for, you know, uh, CNRE. So I think that we are, I want to come up with appropriation for roads as well. But once again, it wants to be off the new paving schedule thing, right, because we're doing the road study, so I agree with you, but I think this is where. We need to decide how much, this gets back to the conversation, how much is the Board of Finance comfortable appropriating, right, and then we can parcel it up, it could be. A, a CIP project in roads, it could be CNRE just put into views, the CNRE, you know what I mean?
So, a process question, the special appropriations originate with us.
Not only, not only, but general issue.
I'm sorry. As a matter of process, I mean, I understand as a matter of meeting schedules, sometimes it, it, it gets voted on first by the Board of Finance. But, but they're pending. Board of Selectment approval, because special appropriations start with. The Board of Selectment, and then go to Board of Finance.
As a matter of process, yes, but I.
We, we, we short-circuit that sometimes just to, to take advantage of meeting schedules.
For timing, but I do think that the Madison investment plan is a bigger overlook of everything, um, because. You all already, we already have. These big projects that were approved, they went to, uh, referendum, and now we have this debt service coming on, so I think it's a financial. Thing on how we're gonna pay for it, and how can we look forward to smoothing out the tax impact based on what you all already approved? So I kind of think like it's a chicken and an egg, like, we all have to work collaboratively. To figure out what we need based on what you all are, have already approved, or what could be potentially approved in the CIP document.
Well, and I guess my question was, is, if, if this is a Board of Finance's decision, they should just take the decision with this.
Well, I think that they're, they're meaning. Uh, in my view, I don't know how much they're comfortable appropriating.
Well, and I agree.
And then we can have debating about, is it a million here and a million there, or is it, but I want to know, is it two million, is it, uh, five hundred thousand, like, where, where are they gonna be supportive? And then maybe we weigh in on the best way to direct it, and then ultimately they have to approve everything as well. But I think it would be good for them to come out of that workshop, like. Some, you know. Thoughts about how much.
We have to have be a rationale behind it.
Yeah, I mean, we're like twenty, twenty-three million now, aren't we, we're making so much interest from, and I'm like. I'd rather get that, you know, helping next year's budget, you know?
We need to deploy that money.
Yeah, and I mean, like.
And that.
We're ready, we need to deploy that money, that's.
A lot of the work that we have.
It's too much around just sitting there.
I know, and I, and I'd like to get the road, uh, you need paving, paving, you're getting less paving done for, for a dollar because prices have gone up. Like, let's get some road spades, then, it's just sitting there, and I think they're.
I know, I see, babe.
I think we all have our own list of what we have, but I think, uh, I think the reality is, everybody recognizes that we need to, you know. Get some, do another one of these appropriation, I guess is my point, like we did last year, and, um, let's figure out what the amount everybody's comfortable with. And then we'll have a little, there might be a difference in philosophy, let's hear what they say, we can have our conversations.
Absolutely, and I personally would like a method behind our methods, I just don't want to grab a million, two million.
Right.
You know, I want the Board of Finance to sit down with a plan, share it with you all, and hopefully you'll all agree that this makes sense, rather than just grabbing a number and say, let's infuse. A million dollars with no rationale. So there is a plan that I'm hoping we could review on Wednesday.
And I would extend that to the entire undesignated fund balance, what is, what is the plan for that, because right now it's very ad hoc. And, um. And, and it would be good to.
Yeah, and it's a.
Find a home, not, I mean, it's not gonna be right down today, but.
That's.
Ball push-on, it's a chip, yeah.
Um. So.
Well, otherwise, we, well, I mean, but, but you see, but otherwise, we should be writing checks back to the taxpayers, because we've collected money we don't need. So.
Yeah, 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 this one's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, but I think, um, so I think, hey, the other way I look at it, it's a, it's a good problem to have, right, because.
Better than the opposite.
There's, right, and there's a lot of need. That could be directed, you know, to using some of that excess fund balance, get some things done, so, and I think they totally want to do that too, but. To Stacy's point, you want to do it in a comprehensive, thoughtful, long-term planning, not just saying, yeah, let's fund this, let's fund that, you know, you want to have a plan.
Oh, yeah.
Which is what the Madison investment plan is, when we did this three years ago, it was all about knowing. Future budgets are gonna be, you know, impacted by the debt service, and we want to mitigate that as much as possible, so. And it's working okay so far, so, um, all right, so to be continued. Um, and I realize, I'm not familiar with what number nineteen is, so authorization to submit application for Connecticut Department of Transportation micro grant in the amount of twenty-one thousand. Two thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand for the bicycle and pedestrian educational signs. What was this?
This was sign, educational.
Aaron. Aaron had sent you an email.
Is that what, oh, oh, the bike, the pedestrian side it is, I think it's aware, I think you're aware, so it's not even a vote.
I think. Yeah, they just want you. Okay.
So it's not even a vote. Okay, so, yes. Yeah, I'm supportive of authorizing, I don't know why this. That's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Great, so we would love to see those signs, all right, thanks, all right, so now, I guess we do have citizens' comments, um. If there's any members in the public, raise your hand, raise your hand online if you have any comments or questions. Uh, Jeannie, any hands raised?
Yes, Fran Brady would like to say.
Okay.
Go ahead, Fran.
Hi, thanks, this is Fran Brady, one oh eight Genesee Lane, North Madison, co-founder of Mad for Trees. I just wanted to say, over the last five months, a team of five dedicated Madison residents. Have spent dozens of hours researching dozens of Connecticut, New York, and even our sister town, Madison, New Jersey's tree ordinances. We have interviewed a city forester, a tree warden from Guilford. And we have discussed town processes and resources with Madison's town planner, tree warden, and the Planning and Zoning Board. We shared our ideas with the Madison Land and Conservation Trust, and with two local environmental lawyers. Uh, with tree care companies and arborists, and even with an official at the Connecticut Department of Transportation. After numerous iterations, the Tree Ordinance Drafting Committee is ready to present version number eleven. With its final recommend, recommendations for such a. Uh, much-needed set of rules to govern the removal and replacement of trees in our town. This considerable effort will, will be too late to right the wrongs that have occurred at two fifty-one Boston Post Road, the future Madison Oyster House. Where a number of significant trees were illegally removed, and more are being requested, but hopefully, with the board's support, we can prevent the, the next mistake. We respectfully and proudly request an opportunity to present our recommendations, preferably within the next two to three weeks. In order to move this much-needed governance forward. Thank you for your service to our town.
Great, thank you very much, Fran, and I know I got your email last week when I was out of town, but that would certainly be on a future agenda, so I'll be reaching out about coordinating that, okay?
Yep, thanks.
Any other, uh, hands raised, or? No, okay, with that, you're in no objections, meeting is adjourned, all right, thank you, everybody.